Good morning, first of all.
Good morning.
Morning. And we, I got caught in the elevator by Mr. Fuda, so I know he wants to stop and say hello to everybody in the middle of the meeting, so I invited him in. He'll be in in a bit after he makes his rounds floor to floor to floor.
(laughing).
Like Santa Claus.
Oh, boy.[695.29][695.29](laughing).
What do we got going on?
We'll get through this as quick as we can. We've got a pretty big agenda for tomorrow, and lots on everybody's minds for the end of the year, so finish strong. Okay, dispense, uh, mouthful. We'll call.
President, too, uh, I'm sorry, before we get started, Tacey needed to, uh, get out of here quickly, so if we can have her on there for not a day.
We can do that.
All the other, we'll do the roll call, but then, Tacey, you can take over from now before we even start.
Thank you.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Ms. Frenchkow.
Okay, we'll start out, Tacey.
Thanks for letting me jump both spots. Uh, Tacey Vaughn, nine one one coordinator. Um, Bill's gonna take me over to look at some filing cabinets when I have a hump called eleven, so.
Okay.
I'm just trying to skip to the front of the line here. So, right.
New girl's supposed to be in the back, but that's okay.
Yes, right? It's like church, you get there late and you're in trouble, right? Um, just wanted to provide a brief update on, um, during the budget hearing, we talked about kinda nine one one calls, uh, the amount of calls we had, the overtime numbers, um, that you had thought were increasing over the past couple of years and whatnot. So I just sent, um, all three commissioners an email, um, nine one one calls in 2020 were twenty five thousand, that was the first year we got that system. Uh, this year through last week through December eleventh, we're at eighty seven thousand four hundred and seven. Um, we've been consistently ninety five thousand in 2021, eighty two thousand in 2022. The alarming number is the amount of non-emergency calls that we handle over at our agency. Um, 2020, the year the system was implemented, it was sixty seven thousand, 2021 it was two hundred and fifty two thousand, and 2022, two hundred and fifty thousand, and 2023, as of last week, was two hundred and thirty three thousand. So I know one of our main goals we'd like to do is talk with IT and possibly our phone providers and see about potentially doing something with our phone system. We're getting a lot of ten-digit calls that could be handled by, you know, a phone tree, um, or something along those lines. Also, we're getting a lot of robo calls that tie up the dispatchers and whatnot. In regards to the overtime, in 2018, uh, we had six, uh, six thousand one hundred and sixty-five hours of overtime, and at that time, we were at thirty five full-time staff. So you can tell, that's the last time we were pretty much full staff. Twenty nineteen, um, just summarizing for you guys, we had nine, uh, ninety four hundred hours of overtime, we were at thirty two full-time staff. Twenty twenty, that's when it started to jump, uh, thirteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-five hours of overtime, we were at twenty five full-time, one part-time at the beginning of 2020, and at the end of that year, we were at twenty five full-time, one part-time. That's when kinda COVID started to take over. Twenty twenty-one, we were at thirteen thousand, uh, one hundred hours of overtime, twenty five full-time, one part-time, and five probationary. And in 2022, we were at thirteen thousand six hundred and twenty hours of overtime with twenty-three full-time, one part-time, and two probationary. Um, this year, we're currently at eleven thousand five hundred and twenty hours of overtime, and that's with twenty-one full-time staff, two part-timers, and four probationaries. Those two part-timers are now gone, so we are currently at twenty full-time, three probationary, um, and at eleven thousand hours of overtime. So we're below last year's numbers. I did email you guys this, so you have those numbers in front of you kinda outlining it. Um, you should have that currently. Just wanted to give you a little update of kinda where that's at. So, um, considering that we're at twenty full-time staff, overtime is pretty much, you know, lower than what it's been in the last several years. So that's kinda where we're at with that. Um, feasibility study, uh, we graded the RFQ submissions. Um, we went with, um, Philip Secanic and their partners. Um, now we can enter into negotiations with them to see what the cost would be to do that feasibility study. They are reaching out to their partners, with a couple of their consultants, and with the holiday schedule, it'll probably end up being the first, after the first of the year for us to meet with them and start talking numbers. Um, so hopefully, we can get moving on that pretty quick. Their timeline is right around just over three months to complete the feasibility study. Um, I did reach out to the health director to let him know that we are still one hundred percent interested in moving into that building and appreciative of the offer. Um, just wanted to let him know not to forget about us, 'cause, you know, some times pass. We do have a couple of background checks for some, two new supervisors, those are in the background process right now. Um, pending the positive results of that, they will go for their drug screen, and hopefully we'll have them in front of you guys within the next two weeks. Um, four probationary hires are currently still going through training. Um, we did release one of those, and you'll get that in the next meeting. It was, we missed the deadline for that.
Um, advisory review board.
Uh, yes.
We got a little heat on that last week for not posting it everywhere, but that's something that we explained and defended in the meeting Wednesday. There's only certain categories that we need. You need some from a certain municipality, second largest, so there's only a few that fit in that category, and I think we tried to reach out to all of them, or at least reach out the ones that had an interest or expressed an interest.
Right.
Um, we may have overlooked some of them, but I think we more or more or less targeted, in a sense, the categories that we needed to target to make sure that those are for the people that, at least what I looked for on there was people that weren't already on another board, to kinda keep it fair across the board for people, um, and with the status as far as meeting or what.
Status as far as that is, I've sent out emails and had phone calls with both, with uh, several of those individuals, waiting on their availability, um, obviously trying to get five or six people together at the same time. Um, some of them had no availability on certain days, so I'm trying to find a day that works for everybody. I would like to get us, if we can't meet prior to the end of this year, which I would like to at least meet, to get everybody kinda on the same page as far as what our plan is, um, then definitely within the first week or two of the new year. Um, we're only required to meet once a year, um, but I would like to meet quarterly, you know, at least, especially while we have some stuff going on and trying to get the stuff. In regards to the nine one one final plan, I did go to the workshop down at the state, um, at the DAS office last week. Um, they are putting out a template, kind of a PDF fillable form, um, as a new way of doing it, and they would prefer you use that. It's different than any nine one one plan I've ever seen, um, but that's kinda the way they're pushing it. So that was supposed to be sent out last Friday, and it was not sent out yet, so they haven't pushed that out. As soon as they do, we'll start filling in the answers on that, um, and, and get that kinda going, and that's where we'll put all our funding mechanisms and how we're gonna move forward.
How many, how many individuals on the board do we have?
Uh, I believe it's six.
Okay, and then, uh, in the past, it was police chiefs, fire chiefs, like an official.
It used to be three, so it used to be a technical advisory committee.
Okay.
That you could have anybody you wanted, so like, what I did at my prior county was, we had police chiefs, fire chiefs, um, city administrators, city managers, mayors. Um, that way, everybody, every city and village that we kinda dealt with had a say. Um, then you had a planning commission, which was the, um, president, the commissioners, uh, the most populous city manager, and then the most populous municipal city. So, um, that was a three-member board, and then, then from there, so went technical advisory committee, planning committee, then to the commissioners for final approval.
Right.
Now they've done away with that completely. You could, it's a six-member board that has voting rights, but you can have as many people as you want on it.
Okay.
So you can actually open it up to more people, but only six, those six that are by statute have the vote.
When we get, when, it's probably best, when we do that, do we get, um, like a consensus among the fire chiefs, associates, from the police chiefs, is that how we select a member, or is that just?
It would make most.
Just anybody that has interest.
It would make most of A to C who has interest, and B, if you did like a fire chiefs association, maybe have them send the president.
Right.
Because obviously, they oversee the whole fire chiefs.
Right.
Um, the police don't really have anything like that.
But typically, I think in the past, it was Warren's police chief that was on the, typically, just because they're the, they're the largest.
I think by the statute, this time, it would be Warren's mayor would be the one that would have a seat as the actual voting member.
Okay.
Um, what my thought is, is get those first six together.
Yeah.
We'll have a meeting, kinda touch base, figure out what our plan of attack is going for, and then we can open it up to more people, obviously, with being time crunched and everything.
Okay. Would they have to bring that in front of us to approve tomorrow, or is that something that she's gonna do?
I don't know, with the new statute, I don't know how that would work, but we'll, we'll do whatever we need to do legally to be in good standing.
I'll check with Danzo, but I don't think you'll need approval as far as those members.
I mean, at the end of the day, we're still the, we're still the ultimate approval. This is just, this is more of like an advisory.
Rubber stamp.
An advisory committee, you know.
Rubber stamp, essentially, I mean.
I don't think we're allowed to say that word, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm the one that always says things they aren't supposed to say, but.
I think that was like February, something that got triggered from the book out of there.
Well, okay, I wasn't here then. I'll claim ignorance. Um, I mean, ultimately, at the end of the day, you can have as many meetings and as, as you want, but at the end of the day, it's the commissioners that have the final say.
Decisions are the commissioners.
One hundred percent.
Well, I think part of the problem we experienced in nine one one over the last couple of years is we didn't have an advisory board. There was nobody to lean towards when they went through losing a director, looking for a new director, interim director for three years, there was nobody to guide other than commissioners, and oftentimes, things get guided by politics maybe sometimes. So, we need to have this advisory board active, and like you said, I like the idea you're gonna meet quarterly, and I think we should keep it that way, with as important as that is, and as many big changes are gonna come, as expensive as that's gonna be, the more professionals we have leading us through this, or at least giving you ammunition or tools, bigger your toolbox is, the stronger we're gonna be.
Well, I think the most important thing, too, is this way, they have buy-in, and then they can go back to their cities, villages, townships, and they can relay what's going on. Whereas right now, you know, in the last several years, due to the change in administration and, and how things have gone and everything, you don't have, people don't know what's going on with nine one one or where we're at. So this way, we can kinda, you know, at least give everybody a heads up as to what's going on, and everybody has an ability to have an insight and input into what's going on, so.
Okay, anything else for Jacey Moore? Bill, you have anything you wanna get to, uh, before you leave?
I have number nine on the agenda. I miswrote it. It should be lowest investment. It's responsible because that's a federal fund language, but not lowest investment. Lowest investment is common thing, not just for awarding projects. The other one is for ARPA funds. That would need to be changed.
This would need to be changed to lowest and best.
Yes, please.
Yes, because it's federal funds.
No, this is not federal funds.
No.
This is borrowed money.
This is borrowed.
Number nine.
Okay.
Well, eventually borrowed money. It's advanced money right at this point, and then we'll, we'll eventually borrow.
Okay. Doesn't change the bid structure or anything like that, just the wording in the.
No, no, just the wording in the line.
The fellow was considerably lower than everybody else.
By far, yes.
And of course.
Under the two hundred.
Best is a given with that, when they're a window company.
Correct. Make them right there, I guess, so. See it on the Ween building, um, as you noticed, the equipment's gone, all but one big piece. Defense will be coming down shortly, and we will be updating fifty more parking spaces and a lot of property right there. You all know that as well.
Back to number nine, Bill. Um, you had the bid, and then you got the alternate one. What's the alternate one?
The big picture window.
Okay, so it's just the one window is what that is?
One large, huge, big window, yes. Unless we talk about the health department.
So we used our procurement, uh, method to do this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes, yes.
One of those.
Funding by, by federal government, so that, you know, I sent it down to Mr. Danzo, you know, 'cause I was thinking, ARPA funding, which it's not.
And he was in agreement with that?
Yeah, he sent it to that way. Lowest investment, lowest investment.
Where did we get the response of the response?
From the ARPA funding language.
Oh, gotcha.
Right, and Martha Yoder, Trumbull County honor, the confusion on this is that we did the engineering through the ARPA funds.
Okay.
So there's confusion.
Oh, I see.
We got two separate things. We did the en, you guys paid for the engineering through the, through the ARPA, and then, uh, but it, we're not paying for the windows through ARPA. We had decided that's, there's a list of the capital projects that we're gonna borrow in this on that one.
Gotcha, okay. That makes sense.
Anything else you need to add for?
Uh, no, I think that's good. As long as we, Madam Clerk, can we correct that language on that one?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Make sure you read the email that we got from Danzo regarding the engineer's building and if you have questions on that, uh, let me know or let Mr. Danzo know. Make sure we get that.
That'll be good.
Where do we correct it?
We wanna move on to the health department building?
Yes, if you want to, I'll bring it up.
Go ahead, go ahead. Uh, so, so Bill and I, um, met with the coroner, coroner's office to, uh, tour the health.
Let me forward, hopefully it'll be.
The, um, health district building down on Chestnut here. Um, he automatically took the liking to it, feels that it suits his needs a lot better than where he's at, again, where he's at right now. Uh, doesn't seem to fit a lot of people's needs, especially his, but, uh, so there'd be a lot of space there. We even talked about, as we did in budget hearings, we talked about the potential for, um, real potential here for, uh, the morgue down there, the cooler and the morgue down there, uh, because the basement is, uh, would be, would be enough to furnish that. I mean, he'd have more than enough space to actually do the autopsies, the cleaning area, the morgue, it could all be down there in one. There would need to be a little bit of a modification on the doors and the entrance ways, but the nuts and the guts of it are there.
It's in the basement.
It's in the basement, so, um, no pun on the guts, but that's true.
(laughing).
Uh, but, uh, so, so obviously, for his office, you know, he's got a staff of eight, um, seven or eight, isn't it?
Something like that.
Uh, so, so the first floor there would be ideal. He wouldn't be using the second floor, uh, at all, and especially if you put a morgue down there, nobody's gonna be using the same part of the thing, so, uh, which is fine, that space is still, could be used for storage or, or different things. Uh, it's not in the best shape anyway, but that first floor and the basement floor are really ready to go with some minor alterations. If we do do the morgue down there, there are some, you know, EPA guidelines and different things that we'd have to sort through. He's looking at his organization in Columbus to see what, what would need to happen. I mean, we've been using, obviously, we've been contracting with Trumbull for the morgue down there, but we don't know what the future holds. When you look at this from a, from a cost savings perspective, it's really, I mean, a, a cooler is how much, I mean, just off the.
Twelve by twenty cooler is about twelve, about ten grand.
Walk-in cooler.
Walk-in cooler, basically. Uh, so, so, I mean, if you, if you factor in what we've been paying Trumbull and if we could pay them in the long run if we had our own facility, the convenience of it, the effectiveness of it.
And then the cost savings that he would bring with that.
And the cost savings he can bring with that, and potentially even in the future, we talked about, um, partnering with Mahoney County on, on autopsies as well, but that's a little bit farther down the line. But I think that this facility would be optimal for him, and he's extremely excited about it. He likes the opportunity to, to be able to move, and even more excited about the opportunity of having, having the morgue in the basement there, because he can, I mean, obviously, with a one-stop shop, he wouldn't have to leave, wouldn't have to be going to Trumbull. Uh, there would be plenty of receiving area for families. Um, but we're very fortunate to have Dr. Sturgeon here for, you know, that is able to do these autopsies. If we, if we were to, you know, we were doing in the past before we, when we had that hiccup, before we had him, we were sending him to Cleveland, and it was taking a lot of time, and it was hard on the family, so I think this facility is gonna work for the coroner. Bill, did you have anything to add to that?
I reached out to a couple funeral homes to.
Yeah.
Give you, just because, um, just to know from OSHA regulations and EPA regulations, there are, there is a list of things that would have to be abide-by before it was to happen, but I, like I said, I've reached out to a funeral home or two, and they gave me some information. I already got a catalog on morgue furniture, per se, um, so, yeah, to keep moving forward, I'm just gonna get it going.
And it's an opportunity to, to, obviously, with the health department leaving, it's an opportunity to have one of our assets not be vacated like the Ween building, and having it just dilapidated. I think if we put, uh, minor renovations into this, and, and obviously, the mortgage is gonna take a little bit more with new flooring and antimicrobial and antibacterial stuff that we need to.
And the doc said he'd save, what, forty thousand a year?
Forty thousand a year in the long run.
In the basement?
In the, in the long run.
Long run, yeah.
We need to have the, the upfront cost, but then, um, when you look at it over a ten-year period, he's gonna save roughly forty thousand dollars a year, so, um, it's something that I think we need to look at, uh, the long-term viability of the hospital, uh, the, the maintenance that they put into it and everything that we pay through the contract. I, I just think it's, we can do that ourselves and have that as sort of a one-stop area for the doctor. I think that's, that's, uh, I think that that would be viable down the road, and again, one of our assets that's gonna lie dormant, and, and unfortunately, we have nothing else to put in there. This would be a perfect fit for him. Uh, he's excited for it, like I said, but we're even more excited about the potential to put that in the basement, because, uh, the long-term cost savings and the effectiveness to his office. Uh, he's excited for it, like I said, but we're even more excited about the potential to put that in the basement, because, uh, the long-term cost savings and the effectiveness to his office.
Go ahead, look at it one day. I'll take you down there, and you can see. Let's go for it.
Sure. I mean, it's almost like when we, when we started putting our heads together, it's almost like it was built for that.
Yeah, it's ideal.
I mean, it's, it's ideal, wi- with the one room in there, uh, being the exact measurements of the cooler, and then the area with the drain, uh, table and-
Table, and then the offset, and the full drape, that he can do his work on the other side.
Yes, and the sink there and everything, the water hookup, everything is there. They're ready to go, so it, it would be minimal. Like I said, the cooler would be one of the biggest expenses, and that's-
Well, the outside, the outside switchback sidewalk would be, because it's done anyway, that whole back half needs to come up and be redone, so that would be one of the biggest expenses, and that in itself-
Yeah. Unless you did one of those pulley elevators.
Yes, or a switchback, whatever, either way.
Whichever's more convenient and more cost effective.
Whichever's more convenient for the people bringing in those people inside, yes.
So essentially, what we're talking is, so there, there's an entrance in the back of the building, and obviously, an entrance to the basement in the front of the building. What you don't wanna do is bring the bodies in the front of the building on Chestnut there, so if you go, if you go around the back, there is an entrance, but it's not suitable for gurneys and that, for the, the sort of things that they need to bring in. So there would need to be some, some build out there, but it'd be minimal. Minimal, he can show you when we go look.
Yeah, let me go look at it.
I've been to health department meetings in the, in the basement, and it's, it's starting to be remodeled, as far as that goes, lighting and everything too.
The only thing we'd have to do is that floor would have to probably come up, because that's not antimicrobial or anything, it's tiled, so, I mean, the amount of water and everything's gonna soak, that area that would soak in there and everything, we'd probably need to-
Apache-type floor.
Yes. Now, whether or not taking it out and putting something over it, that's, that's something we can discuss too, but there's, there's potential there to, to make this a seamless fit, really, for minor costs, and actually, a cost savings over the ten-year period, so.
We don't need any type of special-
License.
Septic tank or anything like that for blood and everything, we just put it in the sewer system?
No, it just goes where it goes.
I know, it's, it's all morbid to talk about, I know, it is.
Yeah, I, like I said, funeral homes do different systems. They have their own, how they eat, but, um, yeah, there is an EPA and OSHA guidelines that we'd have to follow as a morgue, but it's kinda the same as a funeral home. It's not as, you know, we don't have formaldehyde where they do.
And, and Doc's working through all that, with the-
If that doesn't work, they can have their old morgue back at the nine one one center.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That's where they work.
In the basement.
It's great for the mood.
And the awesome researchers?
All the, all the buildings fired up, boilers all fired up with the cold, everything, snow. And maintenance-wise, how many guys we got out plowing and salting and stuff? We only have one or two guys, no?
We have one out on workers' comp, she falls the ladder, so she'll be back soon, I hope, but we have four right now, yeah.
Yeah. Very good, thanks.
Thank you, Dave. Thanks for that. One o'clock.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah. Okay, well, so-
And Mr. Berkey says you're the only one we're paying to be here. I'll put you up next.
Just, just real quick, I'm sorry. I know you're getting paid by the hour.
By the quarter hour.
I'm happy to know that public servants aren't being paid.
So we have a meeting, myself and Mr. Tanamalisa over at Eleventh District Court of Appeals for their fencing. Uh, we do have a ordinance established already to use that parking lot as a, uh, a decent, so I already gave a copy to, uh, Paul McCosky, the city engineer. So he's okay with what we're planning on doing, so we have a pal over there at one o'clock to go over with the judge on what he needs for a fence.
Well, what I'd like to see too is before we sink a dollar into that, we make sure we get some type of contract or commitment that they're gonna stay there. And there is lots of talk throughout the community that we have three Lake County judges and a Georgia County judge, and then there's a seat open, and it's another Georgia County, your Lake County judge is running for that. And if they have a majority of people that live in Lake County, we don't want them moving up to Lake County and leaving a thyme jar after we sink dollars into a fence for them.
Well, I can tell you, if we don't do that, though, the, the-
Right, but, but we want a commitment too. If we're gonna sink the money, and we want a three, five, ten-year contract with them, that they're not going anywhere to protect ourselves, you know, I mean, we're not gonna-
We can discuss that.
And we can't dump a couple hundred thousand dollars or something, and then they leave next spring, or next fall, or after twenty-four election or whatever, they decide, you know, that'd be a frivolous waste of taxpayer dollars to do that. So, we need a commitment.
Thank you.
See it one.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Berkey? You know, my building is right next to the, uh, old board health building, so all I ask is that you-
Oh, that's right.
All I ask is you put up good signings, so the ambulance is know which way to go.
You have storage space down in your place, man?
Well, we think it's a cool space, but no. Well, anyway, I'm here just to make sure that we're ready to go forward. This is a, the, uh, Mills Johnson filed the type one annexation for the thirty-one plus acres from Holland and Baina, Kansas, to, uh, to the city of Niles. Uh, this comes in as a type one, leaves, as I said last week, when I was here two weeks ago, very little discretion on the part, no discretion on the part of the commissioners. You have, you know, it's just submitted, and you vote on it, so, uh, and approve it, uh, as required by that section of the statute that I previously quoted, so, uh-
What numbers, Marle?
Twenty-seven.
I worked with Lisa, and we worked up the, uh, um-
But just so we're clear, the, the Board of Commissioners has no discretion on this.
Correct.
So, if you voted no or voted yes, it wouldn't even matter?
Well, you have to vote, yeah, yeah.
Well, if you, if you vote no, then it's gonna go to court, and it'll be a lengthy battle, and-
Well, yeah, then you're just inviting litigation, correct. Um, I-
I mean, essentially, both sides have agreed to this, so this is-
Yeah, that's the point I was just gonna make, uh, the, 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 all last year, when this annexation was pending, uh, the, the original annexation was pending, uh, there was always discussion going on between the two sides about how to come to a long-term agreement on annexation between those townships and the city of Niles. They did, and they came up with an annexation agreement, that annexation agreement is part of the paperwork that's been submitted. All the paperwork that was submitted, I reviewed all of this, and it's all set to be voted on tomorrow. Statute is so, so clear on this, I'd like to point it out real quickly.
Yeah, please, quickly. I wanna make sure that that's out there, though, that the commissioners have zero discretion on this.
Yes.
Because, uh, it, there, there's been so much misinformation on this, on these annexations from the very get-go, from people that were coming to our meetings, that were saying different things. There was a lot of half-truths and a lot of misinformation, so we wanna get the, the truth out there and what it actually means.
Right, and, uh, and this is, you know, there are three or four types, or five types of annexations that's gonna be submitted. It's type one, uh, under one of the statutory sections, and, and, and it says, the statute under seven oh nine point zero two two of the Highway Rights Code, upon receipt of the petition, actually, let's go back, it starts, petition shall be accompanied by a certified copy of the annexation agreement, that's, pardon, the attachments, uh, that it was entered into between municipal corporation and the township. And the important wording is, upon receipt of the petition and the applicable agreement, Board of County Commissioners at the board's next regular session, which would be tomorrow. The latter upon his journal, a resolution granting the annexation without wholly negating-
Shall grant, shall grant the annexation.
That's the statutory language, whatever the, period, yes. So whatever, whatever the legislature rationale was, that's exactly, uh, is what, exactly what, rationale of the, of the state legislature is bound to follow.
So, if, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, uh, Christie just pointed out to me that that changes the taxing district for those individual, those-
Is it creating a new taxing district?
Is it creating a new one, is it?
Oh, no, no, I-
Okay. So everybody stays where they're at in the taxing district?
No, 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 this one changes. I'm sorry, this one, there are some that don't change, but this one is the one that changes.
Okay. You're going to create a new taxing district for what?
No, not a new, they'll just be incorporated into the city of Niles.
Okay, so we'll need, yeah, excellent.
And then, post hearing after the meeting, after the vote tomorrow, there's certain follow-up work that has to be done about circulating it to the city, the townships, and the auditor's office, and clarify it.
Good. Okay, all right. Got it. Okay.
But it's, this, this, uh, like a regular annexation, except with this-
Okay. We've been dealing with the type two recently, and it creates a whole new taxing district, where it would include like part of a town, you know, have part of a town to part of a city, and you have to allocate the inside village, so we're not having to do that. That's perfect.
Yeah.
We're gonna have a type two coming.
Right, it, yeah, we have a type two that is, is, is in the works right now.
Uh-huh. Oh, good.
If they ever get back to it, yes.
(laughing).
But, so the question that I have is-
Jump on, Jeff, right when we get to it.
I'm, I'm happy to show up tomorrow. I'll be certainly available by phone if anything's-
Feeling better now.
I, is there any reason why I need to be here tomorrow? Because it is-
Unless, unless the, the press is gonna have questions, I'd rather you field them as our legal counsel. I mean, he can do that today. I'm sure Reagan's gonna do the story today.
And I'll be available by phone, or I'll, I'll come down tomorrow, if you'd rather have me up here tomorrow.
Only is any reason. You cleared up here pretty good.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, again, it's just one of those statutory things. He's a one, I'll send that code down to you. I think I sent, sent it to you several months ago, as a matter of fact, with that statutory wording. It's surprising, though, it's not absolute, but it's-
Well, and, and I know that a lot of times that annexations don't favor townships, ever, it seems like. A lot of those, a lot of those laws have to be revisited if we wanna change them. That happens at a lot, larger level than at the county level, obviously, state legislature.
Well, this, this process, uh, keeps the residents of the township or the city from testifying. I mean, this is just a blatant, the way it is.
Right.
Anyway, then, I'll, if you need me, I'll be there tomorrow, I mean, I'll be out by phone and-
Okay.
Can I see you for one minute?
Sure.
For Doc.
Yes, absolutely. Want to get some, thank you, Mr. Berkey. Merry Christmas, thank you.
Because I'm glad it worked out like this.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's a difficult situation to deal with. You know, this has been kicked down the road for a long time, over a year, year and a half in the process with this board, and I'm glad to see it's not affecting any neighbors, that the neighbors get out of this thing, basically, scot-free, with a stern agreement that Niles isn't coming for them at a later date, and this isn't just the first piece, this is the one and only piece, and between the landowner and the city, and the neighbors, whether they like it or not, it's, if I was a neighbor, they may, there may be some feelings there, they still don't like it, but they know it doesn't affect them.
Yeah. Essentially, I think-
And they're not forced to annex in the Niles if they have Niles utilities, which they may like.
Right. That, that was the big thing, the ordinance from Niles that, that required that, and that was always the bone of contention when we talked about this stuff. I mean, obviously, properties that are contiguous, uh, and can be annexed would be one thing, but that, that ordinance that was drafted in Niles really kinda put it, put this in sort of like a chaotic, um, uncertainty for a lot of the Howland residents and a lot of the Baina residents. So, I think that, um, now that that's sort of squashed and put to bed and this agreement's in place, I think people will know, uh, exactly where they stand, um, no, pun intended geographically, but know exactly where they stand, um, wi- with, with, uh, this agreement. You know, I mean, it, it, it basically reinforces what a type one annexation is meant to be, you know, contiguous, um, with, with utilities and not, not any of this stuff where, well, if you're receiving utilities from a, a municipality, even if you're not contiguous, we still get to annex you. No, that's not how this works. So there, that, that was, that was really the, the part of this that, uh, the townships had an issue with, and I think it cleared that.
And, and it does preserve, in a sense, landowners' rights too.
Yes, of course.
I, I firmly believe in landowners' rights, and this landowner chose to do that.
Yep.
The landowners around him weren't forced to do anything with their property they didn't wanna do.
Right.
So, I guess that, that's the, the, uh, rainbow at the end of this thing.
Yes.
Okay, we'll get back to the beginning. I dispensed with the reading of the minutes, approved the bills, and, uh, transfer funds.
I'm gonna let, uh, Chris, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, I'm gonna let Christie, uh, deal with the actual, uh, transfer and explain it along with Michelle, um, but there is a typo on there that, for the dates, those dates are incorrect, and Lisa has that, so-
Okay, so she'll fix that.
She's got it, so I just wanna let, you know, 'cause I didn't, if you see twenty-two, I thought you-
Oh, yeah.
Question that, so, uh, but I'll let Christie go ahead.
The date should be December seventh through December fourteenth.
Great.
Um, and the, uh, department requesting the transfer of money is the dog kennel, and the amount is two hundred and forty thousand, and the fund number that would be coming from is Fund Nine Forty-Three, which is Casino, and that's the fund that has, uh, supported the dog pound in the past. Um, I have a couple of French, or a spreadsheet, and, and, and you see the highlighted yellow line, and, uh, twenty twenty-two, uh, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars was transferred from the Casino fund to, uh, the dog kennel, and in twenty twenty-one, fifty thousand dollars was transferred. Uh, as of right now, as of December fourteenth, uh, the dog kennel had a negative cash balance in their fund of a little over a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. That was before, um, day twenty-six, which isn't until next week, which is approximately fifteen thousand dollars, and then we, uh, and then they would need a little money to start the year, so we estimated, uh, thirty thousand to start twenty twenty-four with like two pays. Um, about two hundred and thirty-three thousand, I tend to round that, so there's the two hundred and forty thousand. So I will turn it over to Michelle, who can, um, do about their operations.
Just before, Michelle, I wanna, I wanna note one thing, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor. If you look, one of the problems here, aside from just the, it costs a lot to, to run the pound, is that we, we had estimated the fees, and that's the dog license fees, at three ninety-seven, three hundred, and we're at almost a hundred thousand lower than that. So a hundred thousand of this is because of that compliance issue that we've discussed-
Yes.
-several times with the dog licenses, and we're working really hard to try to, uh, to fix that with the software issue, with, um, trying to get more vendors-
Yes.
-doing the promotion through the auditor's office, and hope to remedy that for next year, but, but that's a big part of this, is the compliance.
I, I would think that that's down everywhere with the compliance. I mean, I hate to say it, but-
Yeah, yeah, our revenue's definitely went down-
Yeah.
And our payroll has went up. Our, uh-
Well, we, we started off with nobody in the pound, that's all.
Ex- exactly.
We, we built it from literally the ground up.
Exactly, yeah, with, um, payroll twenty-six, um, we would be at, um, eighty-four percent is of my budget is payroll.
Right.
Eighty-four percent. And if you look at the, on the last page, I do have a breakdown on that, of, uh, the total expenses for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two, and twenty twenty-one, and whether that is non-payroll expenses and what is payroll expenses, and they've been in the eighty-four percent range on payroll expenses-
Well, it should be, for an operational one.
Throughout, yeah, yeah.
And, and Commissioner, I, I agree with you that it's probably down everywhere, but we, we haven't really paid the attention that we need to pay to this license program.
But the, but the, but the software, the increase in the fees, all that will assist in that.
I agree.
Yes, all of that. We, we, we really, we haven't increased the dog licenses, but we are trying to just, I, you know me, carrot before the stick.
Okay. That's right, that's right.
And so we haven't done that, and I hope not to.
Right.
I mean, obviously, that's an option that we need to consider at some point, or we may need to consider. I wanna see how doing the things by increasing the vendors, increasing awareness, all of that, what that does, and if that doesn't help enough, then we can talk about that, all right?
Agreed. Okay.
Yeah, the aud-
So, so when we get to go the next couple of weeks for budget, should we budget that we will be making more money off the dog licenses next year, so we don't need to increase the budget with the dog pound, that'll be increased from that hundred thousand or deficit of what we don't have?
When you look at the deficit of, with the compliance issues, we might even just be breaking even if we, if this, you know, it's, it's hard to, to say that, I would say.
It is, we're hoping so.
Because those compli- those compliance, uh, license, basically, our compliance is going this way.
Yeah.
But our co- but, you know, the, the cost is going out.
Right, like the all that, compliance going down, and the meat in the middle, which is breaking even, yeah, yeah.
Right. Right.
Christie, auditor's office, and some of the licenses that we're receiving for twenty, or the money for that we're receiving for twenty twenty-four, we're actually receiving right now, you know, in twenty twenty-three, so it really, you know, will affect the cash in twenty twenty-four.
Right, and so we're, you know, that's gonna, this is gonna be a process for us, um, but we wanna try to budget realistically, and then we're gonna keep looking at that.
Right.
I also, Christie, and auditor's office, have a suggestion that we don't wait until the end of the year, like we have in the past, that we address it with the twenty twenty-four budget early, like you had mentioned, along with charities, like the Park District and CFCA, all those ones that you guys approved early on, and try to run this in the positive throughout the year, so they know how much money they have, they can make those decisions, versus-
At the end of the year, we gotta, we gotta put a bunch of money.
What we gotta do, and then we'll see how it pans out at the end.
Right, yeah, I don't, I don't wanna do things where we just gotta keep tapping into lottery budget and hope that people are gambling and spending so we can ba- Right, yeah. I don't, I don't wanna do things where we just gotta keep tapping into lottery budget and hope that people are gambling and spending so we can bail this out every year. But thankfully, it's there to do that.
Yeah.
But, I mean, we're looking at two hundred and forty thousand dollars, two hundred and forty thousand dollars. That's.
Right.
Hmm.
That's a big chunk for a department that has a very little budget. I mean, that's.
Right. Well, and it's really been underfunded, that's the problem. It's the compliance and it's not funding it to where it should be. Um, you have to have those staff. I have some thoughts that we can maybe work on too, as far as, I just, uh, we, we'll talk later.
Sure.
But I'm, I'm kind of maybe doing some conserving of some staff, but, but we, you know, we want it to be realistic and, and it's, it's one of those things where it just, again, it was neglected. And that's the reality of it.
Christie, again, uh, as you see, they don't have a lot of revenue sources. That's, that's the first grouping of accounts there. Uh, their main one, and, and the majority of theirs is the, uh, fees for the licenses, it's two hundred and ninety-eight thousand. That doesn't even cover their employee share of the payroll, which is three hundred and seventeen thousand, that first line. That's something to talk about from, you know, P R S, hospitalization or anything. So their revenue is, is.
They're not a money maker.
They're not a money maker. They're, yeah.
The only thing that's went up is our donations. Our donations continue to climb. I did, um.
The donations going to this or do they go into the separate friends of Dog Pound?
Both. Both, yeah. Um, I made everybody a, um, or to a printout, um, for the donation. Um, our rescue group brought in about eighty-five thousand dollars, um, about twenty, um, yeah, about twenty thousand walked through the door at the pound. So over a hundred and some thousand in donations from the public, um, the grants we get, so that, that's a lot of money, um, you know, that we are very thankful for from the public. Um, and that doesn't even include, um, just things other than monetary donations. Andre's soap, bleach, toys, treats, everything like that. The public really takes care of us, um, and that rescue group. Um, I did print out just a few of the donations just for the last month too, just that walked through our door. Um, we just, we have a lot of support in the community. And like the auditor said, um, she has came up with a lot of great ideas to help generate funds. So we're hopeful, um, that we can increase, um, you know, compliance and, and sales.
I mean, at the end of the day, you need employees to run that facility.
Absolutely.
Probably need more than we're gonna need now with a new facility.
Probably.
And, um, that's just the bottom line. You, you can't, uh, loo- look at a, any department and say, okay, can we do this with three people or two people? And that's what we had in there at one time, three and four people.
Yeah.
I mean, you just can't. And, um, so I think, I think the increase is warranted. I do think, I, I love what the auditor's doing as far as stepping up.
Yes.
That's what we're trying to do, is get, generating fees. And I think this board needs to step up as well, as far as fundraising and getting it out there to the public because I think a lot of people would love to donate. We just need to make it very, very well aware of what it's going towards. Uh, we're, we're, there's sort of a rebirth here. We have more employees, we're gonna have a new facility.
Yes.
Think now's the time to, um, tap into that and people see we're putting our money where our mouth is.
And even with regard to compliance, when we talk about dog licenses, there's a lot of education that needs to happen.
Yes.
People don't understand, they just look at it as another tax.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
And, and they don't realize that that's where it's going.
Right.
I, I can't tell you how many people have told me that as we, as we've heard it.
Flush fund, you know.
And I, and all of it, all of it goes. They don't even, like, we don't, at, you know, we administer that as part of our statutory duties.
Right.
Our money to pay our license clerk comes from the general fund. It doesn't come out of this.
Even that, wow.
Yep.
And, and it's all boils down to all these bills that we have here, every dollar we're spending here is because of our own citizens, their responsibility. If, if, if you're getting your kid a dog, you're letting your kid get a dog, and you're not spaying the dog, you're letting them have puppies and they're just handing them out through the neighborhood.
Or you're not getting your license.
And they're not, they're not paying for heartworm, they're not taking them to a vet regularly and stuff. You're shame on your neighbors, shame on you for being a part of it if it's your kid, your nephew, your grandson, your granddaughter that's doing this.
Good point.
They're adding to the problem that now the citizens from Trumbull County, we gotta pick up the tab for your own irresponsibility.
Right.
So if you're not gonna be able to take care of a dog, don't get a dog. And if you, if you have a loved one in your family that's not taking care of the dog, you know, step in, help, do what you, do what you can do in your own family to go get that dog treated, or you go get that dog spayed and don't let them, yeah, it looks cool to have puppies. You know, people think, oh, it's great that I'm gonna have puppies, it's so cute. But if it's a mongrel puppy that nobody wants, you know, that's not the.
We can help with them.
Right, that's not. You know, it's like the island of misfit boys, they own up our dog pound and we gotta pay for them all.
The island of misfit ways.
So this gotta fall back on the community a little too. And I like what Martha says, we, we have to increase our awareness that.
Yeah.
You know, if you're gonna get your kid a dog, get him a dog license too. At least help us.
Right.
So when your kid gets irresponsible in the end, that gives the dog away or breeds it and his puppies end up at the pound, you know, we, you've helped contribute at least to the solution.
Right.
And not just contribute to the problem.
Agreed.
This is all a hundred percent preventable, but unfortunately.
Like we said, compliance is, is an issue. I mean, compliance is an issue even if you go into, you know, even with, in the private sector with stores and everywhere.
Mm-hmm.
Every, every, there's this, there's this notion that nobody has to apply by the rules anymore, that you can skate by, um, whether it be in the private, private sector, public sector. And we just need to make, have greater awareness and continue what we're doing and hopefully that pays off. And I think it will. I think it will, especially when they see what we're doing.
Okay. Number four, received amended certificate, auditor and sheriff.
And, um, those just, I'll let Christie talk about it. Again, we have a date thing, but we'll, it's being fixed.
Yeah. It's just, uh, sort of beginning, year beginning, January first, twenty twenty-four, and this is approved by the Budget Commission.
Twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three. I've, I've written this down on my, I'm, I'm free into twenty twenty-four.
Yes, you are.
Twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-three. Uh, it was dated December eleventh, twenty twenty-three, is the date it was approved by the Budget Commission. Um, the auditor's office had two submissions on there. Uh, one was to increase the estimated revenue in general fund by the amount of interest that the treasurer's office has received this year. Um, so, uh, we estimated at the time four point nine million. But, um, I believe they've received about five point one already, so, uh, we're looking to move back to the general fund here in the next week. And then help, uh, clean up our twenty twenty-three budgetary issues. And then the sheriff's office, oh, I'm sorry, the second one for the auditor's office was the five hundred thousand dollar transfer from, uh, Fund Nine Forty-nine to O One to pay for the.
Valley Vision.
Valley Vision, twenty fifty.
That was there.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, also so that we could budget for that appropriately in the general fund. And then the sheriff's one is, uh, uh, marine patrol grants that they receive for twenty twenty-four.
And number five, uh, receiving place on file, the fiscal year twenty twenty-three annual report for Trumbull County Mental Health and Recovery Board. We still have that one seat, one board seat that's open there that we need to consider sometime to the commissioner. Uh, number six, receiving place on file, purposes October, November, monthly report for the dog warden. Number seven, authorized me, President of Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to execute on behalf of the commissioners and agree in between the Workforce Development Board of Trumbull County, Trumbull County Department of Public Services and Flying Eye Inc. to implement and facilitate disaster relief employment under the special grant received known as Fresh Start Grant. This agreement will allow for any extensions that may occur during the grant. The Fresh Start Grant will allow for disaster relief employment in areas hardest hit by the opioid epidemic. The agreement printed Flying Eye to employ a peer, support worker to provide supportive services to Flying Eyes clients connected to the opioid epidemic. Agreement shall commence on January third until March of twenty-four. Tim?
Yeah, we got this grant. Uh, went to our traditional employer of record providers because of the opioid part of it. They were reluctant because of insurance and whatnot to do it. We reached out to the state. Sorry, that's okay. So we reached out to another part of, of Ohio that had ran into the same thing, the model disagreement with that one. Had the prosecutor look at it, um, had the thing, um, uh, written and we will be servicing this one particular person uh, who herself has a former addict, uh, Percocet and, uh, alcohol, whose son is an addict. And will be helping other addicts to get cured, or not cured, but get back on track.
Yeah.
With, um, through Flying Eye. So it's, it's a win-win, so. So a lot of words later, wha- what this, what. This will help somebody do something. Now, the, the, uh, we were just, uh, or the state was just awarded an extension. So we will probably extend this. We also have some other, uh, possibilities. We may be even to push this out a little bit. So, and I'm, I'm glad because we all gotta do our part to fight the opioid epidemic, epidemic, excuse me, so. There you go.
All right, number eight, to accept the proposal made by Mosquito Lake State Park for the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-six hydrilla management program with an amount of a hundred thousand committed per year for three years. And just in a nutshell, Beth, if I can, see I stewed your thunder for a second. Um, there have been complaints on Mosquito Lake about the vegetation for the last couple of years and it's getting worse. There's many types of plant life in Mosquito Lake. Some is good, some is normal, some is encouraged, natural, some is exotics that are introduced. Um, the hydrilla is an exotic that hasn't been there forever. It's not the average stuff you see out there, the good stuff that's there. It's an invasive weed that when it grows, it grows thick, it mats together and it forms, basically, it locks the water up where nothing can swim through it and the boats can't go through it, skiers can't ski through it, you can't swim in it. Right now, we have about eighty-two acres of Mosquito Lake that's covered in hydrilla. And it doubles every year. So if we'd have took care of this problem last year, it would have been forty acres. This year, we're looking at eighty-two acres. If we don't do anything now, all the scientists and professionals, and we've been having meetings with the state, the feds, um, biologists that deal with this stuff from other regions, and they, they're all telling us, if you don't do something now, it's gonna be a hundred and sixty acres next year. Right now, they came up with a price tag to treat it chemically, is the only way you get rid of it, is about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, I believe. If we don't treat it now, we're looking at a six hundred thousand dollar bill next year, two years from now, one point two million. So this is something that, according to all science and all professionals out there, we need to treat this now or we're gonna kill our lake. There's something that happens called eutrophication. When you clog the lake up with nothing but plant life, it sucks the life basically out of the lake. When the plants die, they suck the oxygen, you end up with a big bog. Now, it's hard to imagine that for the second largest lake in the state, but.
Man-made.
It, man-made. But if you look at, um, Grand Lake St. Mary's, which had a problem like this years ago, that's the largest lake in the state. There's parts of that lake that are dead right now. It, it, there's no fish, people don't fish in it, they can't utilize it. Um, this stuff could happen. There are other lakes also south of us. Hydrilla has come from the south, migrated north, and they wanna protect it from ever getting into the Great Lakes. And right now, we're real close, so we're like the front lines of fighting this stuff also, not only to protect our lake, but to protect lakes north of us in Lake Erie. So with that said, we have some money from the state, but we have to have skin in this game to get the other organizations, including the feds, to kick in more money. And Beth has been working hard with Senator Vance's office, Senator Brown's office. And really, she kinda jumped out ahead of this thing because of the tourism aspect of this, you know, million, over a million people a year visiting the lake. And if they can't boat, they can't ski, and they bust a prop every time they come out here, we're gonna lose those people in a huge downward curve. And we can't let that happen economically.
And first, it's not me, this, this is fast with Trumbull tourism. I'm not the one that came out in front of this, this is the city of Portland. So they have pulled us together.
Maybe.
Exactly. So they have pulled us together. Um, as you said, the group of people includes Ohio State Parks, um, Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, we, and both commissioners were in attendance at a meeting we had earlier in December to talk about this issue. Um, just a couple of things, Lisa. Um, to accept the proposal is actually coming from the city of Portland, not Mosquito Lake State Park.
Okay.
And then Martha, we had talked earlier in the meeting that there's different verbiage, that it's not to accept the proposal. We are requesting, um, a hundred thousand dollar request each year for the next three years. But want to assure the commissioners that we have already put in, um, a Water Resource Development Act request and for the federal government. We have, um, just submitted, Portland, the city of Portland has just submitted a capital budget request to Columbus in the amount of over nine hundred thousand dollars. Um, we have, uh, Army Corps of Engineers has already been investing into Harvester to mitigate other issues. Hydrilla is not just the only invasive species issue at Mosquito Lake right now. It's the, um, it's the quickest growing and it, they really don't want it in Lake Erie. So you can have an inch, an inch wide or inch long piece of hydrilla stuck to a propeller to boat. It can go into Mosquito Lake and go into Lake Milton and you've then infected Lake Milton. It's that easy. So they're talking about creating cleaning stations, additional signage. There's a lot of work that's happened on this. We, as a general community, really just found out about this in August. So, um, the city of Portland has done a great job of leading the way and bringing everybody together. Um, and we're doing everything that we can, not just to make this request to the county, but also many other grant opportunities that we're looking at as well as other opportunities to fund these efforts.
Beth, I just wanna add, very well said, I wanna add that, that meeting we had with, and I was, I mean, truthfully, sort of out of my element. This is nothing that I know a lot about. I think we're all learning it, but what, when you hear about the effects of this, and obviously, we know that Mosquito Lake is, is a gem that we have here that brings in so much direct and indirect, uh, you know, economic development and tourism and all those great things. But in sitting there and talking to O D N R and talking to the E P A and, and noting the, the importance of this and noting that, at the end of the day, that we have to have some skin in the game for this too. Um, this is another one of those things where we're being proactive rather than reactive, because if we sit and wait on this, as Denny said, we can lose our, you know, this lake could be nothing at, at the end of the day. Right now, people are taking their boats out of Mosquito Lake and not even storing their boats there. So it's already having an effect on people, not only people that live here, but people that, that recreate here. Um, it's one of those things where, at first, I'm scratching my head saying, you know, this is a state issue. Why are we getting involved? But at the same time, if we wanna have this asset and this gem here in Trumbull County, we have to do what we need to do and be proactive in what we do to help the state in any way we can. And if that means committing funds, that means committing funds. Um, it's, it's too important to our economy, it's too important to the people that live here and, and, and come here. I, I think we owe it and I, and I think that meeting was eye-opening, um, when we talked about, uh, all the different invasive species, but, but also, i- it's kinda interesting when you think about it, because Warren gets their drinking water from Mosquito Lake. So people think, well, why don't you just kill off the hydrilla this way? Well, there's different invasive species and you gotta use different things to kill them. But a lot of these things we can't use chemically because it's people's drinking water. And, and that gets spread out all through the county. So there has to be some, uh, some, some mindful funding and planning to combat this. And I stand behind this a thousand percent, especially after talking to O D N R, um, and, and mentioning to, to the city of Portland how, how, um, ahead of this they've been, uh, and, and how they need our support. Uh, this is one of the things we're gonna do to grow our area. I mean, we've gotta keep our assets beautiful, pristine and intact. So, uh, this is a way that we go about that and make sure that we do that.
And, and I think too, if we just took Trumbull County, forget about Lordstown, forget about the, the city belt that we have here and just look at the lake itself being the second largest lake in the state.
Right.
If this was in another state, I, I don't know, like, uh, man-made or non-man-made, there isn't a bigger one in Ohio.
Well, it makes a difference, though.
Right, it's still the second largest.
Man-made.
The, the, uh. If, if we took this somewhere else, like Houghton Lake, Michigan, or, um, uh, Lake Chautauqua or things like that, where they don't have the other economy and industry that we have, that is their asset. That is their, their engine for driving economy. So not only do we have, we overlook what mosquito has because we got all this other stuff.
Right.
And we neglected mosquito for so many years. A lot of people now are saying, it's not like it used to be in the eighties, the walleye fish is not the same. It's, it's grown up on the shorelines, there's, but you can't get your boat out, you can't kayak, there's too many weeds. can't kayak, there's too many weeds. It's not, it's, it's time now, we circle back. In all the years that we neglected the lake, now we have to go and make up for some of that and then get ahead of the curve on this thing, because this is an asset that if it was standalone, this would be our gem. This would be how we would make our living. This would be how the people in the county, uh, what they would utilize to survive in this county, being we have the other stuff we can't just overlook it. There's too many people that don't have something like this. People in Cuyahoga County, Geogee County, people that travel here from outside the area, that this is their recreation, this is their family enjoyment, this is their outdoor involvement. You know, we have it here, so they come here. We need ways to captivate their dollars even more. And, and we could make a hell of a living in this county off of those people if we just put a little more attention into the lake and the economy that we can create around Maccat, the economy, we can create up the both east and west shoreline. We're going to have to put infrastructure into that. We're going to have to be creative, but we got to have some of the bareness. That's, to have as large of an Amish population we have in this county, not have one Amish restaurant is despicable to me. To have a lake like the second largest lake and not have any lodging or any place for people to eat, uh, eat on the lake, or very few places, I should say, but with no lodging. And if you, if you went to Houghton Lake, like you said, or Chattoque, there's lodges, motels, bed and breakfasts, Airbnb's everywhere around there, and people go on vacation for a week, a month, two weeks, summer places on it. We have none of that with as large a lake that we have. We don't have any of that economy because we don't have sewer, we don't have water, and now we got a plant problem in the lake that people can't ski, they can't swim, they can't, it, it's, it's, they can't fish from shoreline. It's restricting what we have here. So that's the main reason I'm sitting in this boardroom right now is because of that lake and me wanting to give that lake a name and a voice and a, a life for people to shine light on it. Um, we need to follow up on this stuff, and it's time we, as a community, realize what we have here and invest in it now the best we can.
I would also just, I'm sorry, I would also just mention, obviously, tourism is interested in visitors, but this is a quality of life issue.
Right.
For our residents, it's a great lake for people to recreate that are living here, and with all this economic development and these factories and manufacturing, all of that stuff that's coming in, the top thing they're looking for right now is quality of life. Yes, the site is important, but what can their staff, what can their employees do when they move here? And so that lake is such an asset.
And that's why we're getting the Cuyahoga Commandos and people from Akron and people coming here to get away from the cities to find that quality. But Alexandra.
Commissioner, there is a reason why I keep insisting man-made, and I would like to educate, take this time to educate everybody. So I hear the, you know, obviously, drinking water, but I want to go back to nineteen forty-four when the reservoir was actually put in. It was during SDR's, uh, presidency. I was part of the New Deal. Um, that's a big, that's a big, really poor, uh, big piece of, uh, historical, uh, that we don't talk about a lot. Um, and I think that that's something that we all need to also realize too. It's a piece of history here. Those men and needy females, I'm not sure, in the time, that man, you know, digged up this lake and. Were they?
Oh, yeah.
Wonderful. Well, hey, whatever. You know, what, whoever they were, whatever they were, thank you.
Julie, the congressman Michael Kerwin.
Yeah, right.
One of our long-running congressmen was responsible for that lake, as well as a, a number of other lakes in our region.
But it is a very big deal from a historical standpoint too, and that's why I keep digging the man-made, because our people, people who, you know, came here, worked here, lived here, they dug that lake out with their.
People gave up their property for it, too.
That's right. There's a lot that goes into it, is, is what I'm saying.
And, and it's something too, Julie's right. Back in the forties, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, they built Berlin, Mosquito, and Kerwin reservoir at the same time.
Yep.
And it was for flood control. It wasn't here so we can have a nice lake and have quality of life. They did it for flood control, and they did it, the, the main reason we have these lakes here is so that they always have the same amount of water flow in the Mississippi River to keep commerce going for the United States.
Ladoo and, and Geogee County as well is around the same.
Well, well, they are, but they're, they're all interconnected in one way, and there's, there's someone actually in Washington DC in the Pentagon that every day sits there and their job is, or their team of jobs is to say, all right, we didn't get any rain today in Arkansas and Mississippi. We, we're going to have to suck water out of Mosquito Lake to make sure it flows into the Ohio River ultimately, and eventually in the Mississippi. And two months from now, that water is going to make sure that, two months from now, we got a steady flow in the Mississippi River. We get those barges in and out of the mountain in Gulfport, Mississippi. So that's, that, we're not, it's, it's here for a reason, and a lot of times, if we get a lot of snow, we get more water, we get to retain more water. If we don't get snow, people complain that, why'd you lower the lake so much? That's nothing to do with boating. Fishermen, boaters, swimmers, they are very last on the list with the Corps of Engineers.
Yeah.
Flood control is what it's there for, and maintaining commerce in the Ohio River, Mississippi River, and out in the ocean is why those lakes were built, why the congressmen were able to do those things. So we're just piggybacking on top of it and trying to shine light on the recreation aspect. A lot of times, that's hard. We're dealing with the Corps of Engineers when, as Beth knows, you know, they're working on manuals that kernels and people are making in DC and water scientists, and they don't give a crap how many restaurants are on the lake, they don't give a crap about how many fishermen fish it. It's all, where are we going to get the water when we need it, and do we have enough water? And if they suck this dry on, on the lake, they wouldn't care if that's what it came down to. And there's even alternatives where Meander feeds into Berlin, and Meander isn't a Corps of Engineers lake, but they still have the rights through the Corps of Engineers and through the government to suck water from anywhere they need to suck water, uh, when they need it, and it's all again for, for commerce. It's all to keep them barges flowing up and down the Mississippi River. So we're fighting a big battle here, but we got a loud voice, and we've seen at certain times, um, you know, we can win the battle, and we'll get some funding, and I think we're going to get a little rain on us with this, and hopefully, we collectively as a community can basically save our lake for what we want it for.
Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, I just want to kind of clarify what Beth had alluded to. We're going to add a fun number to that.
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah.
Christie's going to get that for you. And what we will do is then, as part of the twenty-four budget, it will be a line item on your budget.
Okay, fantastic. Yeah, definitely fully support this. So I, of course, appreciate you more for doing that. Okay.
Uh, before we move on, Mr. Commissioner, um, we have Mr. Brutsch is here. Really quick, he asked.
Real quickly, uh, Jim Brutsch, um, Trumbull County County Fitness. I've had a meeting a couple of weeks ago about renting our parking lot. Uh, there are seventy parking spaces there.
Okay.
Um, talked with, it's a long story regarding, uh, the board is still active. We are, have a need to net growth. There is conditions before we sell, before it gets transferred to the new owner, and I had to contact the new owners. And, uh, what we would like to do is, um, there are seventy parking spaces there in that factory. There's thirty-seven cars in the parking lot when I parked in, recorded a tent today. Um, so we would propose to the commissioners would be, um, a hundred, one thousand four hundred dollars a month, which is twenty dollars a parking space. So if you got, if commissioners could, would let me know if that's something that they could, um, go with or not, then I will contact Bill Danzo at the, at the prosecutor's office and put together a lease agreement. Yeah, and it's going to be a month-to-month lease, because we don't know when it's going to be transferred to the, uh, to the new owners, you know, Fox Con or state group. So if you could let me know when the commissioners, and I'll get ahold of Danzo, and he could say, we don't want to do it, that's fine too. In which case, we'll just put up a chain because we have some reliability issues of people locking parking in and out of our parking lot. The other thing is, one last thing, commissioners, I have filed, um, in July of twenty twenty-one, a, uh, application to vacate, uh, a, um, an alleyway in Hubbard. Shock upon shock, it's still pending. Um, so I'd like the board to maybe rule on it before I, I'm already on social security, but you're giving.
Did you?
Age of social security.
I know that the prior, um, prior clerk was dealing with that a little bit. Do you, have you made the new clerk apprised of all this information?
I've only been talking with Mr. Danzo. I haven't.
Okay.
I don't want to infringe upon the, uh.
Okay.
Commission, but if you will, I will talk with her.
Please, please, after the meeting, or.
I'll call her, I'll, I'll get ahold of.
You get ahold of her, yeah.
I will.
Leave her.
What's the name of the alley?
There wasn't a name of the alley.
Oh, yeah, unnamed alley.
There was one, there was.
We had a hearing on it.
The Maitland, oh, we had a hearing in December of twenty twenty-one. My friend, this guy named Fuda was on the board at the time.
I just wanted to check my records to see what we wrote, so.
There was some misconception about whether or not it was appropriate or not, but at the time, the.
Yeah, he.
Uh, the, um, um, the law has changed. The law was, the original legal opinion that the county got was incorrect because the law had changed, and that's been rectified, which there we don't have it. So I just, I just have my wits in here, so I just wanted to just.
We'll, we'll discuss with Danzo.
About the, uh, the parking lot. I thank you very much for your time. Thank you for people I jumped ahead of. Thank you, commissioners. I got it. Thank you.
Merry Christmas, Julie.
Merry Christmas, Julie. After him.
Twenty bucks a mile, what do you think?
Yeah, there's a process that Danzo spelled out, I know, uh, that we have to follow in order to do that. So I'd like to consult. Martha, did you get a copy of that too, like Danzo?
No, uh, what I did get, um, is an opinion, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor. I did get an opinion that I had requested before I kind of, you know, handed hands a few weeks ago, um, about whether you could charge employees for weeks being.
Okay.
And I'll be glad to forward that to you with privilege.
Yeah, yeah, because that'll, that'll determine a lot.
I'll take care of that. Um, and also, after that meeting a few weeks ago, when I was accused of practicing real estate without a license, I, um, I followed up with, um, I, I followed up with Mr. Valesky just to let him know I was stepping away from it, and he, you have his number.
Yes.
And I know that he was trying to reach out to you. I think you were ill too.
Yes, I will get back to you.
So I did just kind of want to remind you of that. So, because there's other, other things on the table as well, and I would suggest seriously sitting down with, um, one of you, sitting down with, uh, Bill Hart about what's going to be available, so you guys have a, an accurate assessment of how much space you actually have.
It would be nice if we get Bill to make a, like maybe a coverlet map on there with how many spots we do have now and what the potentials are, aerial view type of things, so we can see what makes sense.
We can help him with that.
And like you said, there's thirty-six cars there today. He's got seventy spots. Do we need all seventy?
And.
I don't know, until we, until we can make an assessment of how many spots do we really need, you know, maybe we release half of them or something, and not all of them if we don't.
Right.
We don't need them, we don't need to pay for them.
And, and, uh, you know, what I did with, with Mr. Valesky, because I wasn't moving, we weren't moving fast enough to get that opinion, because I didn't want to talk to you guys about that until, or have him broach you, until we had that opinion, so that you had all the information.
Yeah.
Um, it's, you know, go ahead and chain it up. I mean, they won't know that they're not supposed to park there unless you do it, unless you say, and that's what I told Mr. Valesky, that's what I told Mr. Valesky, is, you know, people are going to park where they're going to park unless you say no.
Right.
And the current guy behind it's a charge of fifty a month? And the old spots we used to park, is your own guy?
Yeah, he's tar, he, he is, he put notices on folks' cars for fifty a month.
But I don't think anybody's parking there anymore.
He might, well, he says, he's talked to people. I don't know. Um, I don't know who's parking and who's not there.
How do you.
There's only three or four cars that park there.
I mean, I look out my window every day, and there's hardly some, they've gotten the notice.
Well, he, he's around, so, because they're working on the funeral home and doing stuff in there, and so, um, it's because they're, they're there, so he knows if somebody's parking there that shouldn't be parking there, and he'll put in a, you know, tell them to move.
Okay.
So it's not like he's an absentee person in, you know, the next town over. He lives right here in town, and they're still, still.
Actually lives right.
Yeah.
Yeah, Julie's right.
Right close.
I was just wondering if Warren City patrolled that area, and that they were the enforcing agency, or did it?
Well, not for him, though, he's in private law.
No, 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 not for him. It's private law.
Okay.
Um, they're the enforcing agency only for the city stuff, but.
Okay.
It is, and, you know, and he was saying, well, I don't want to, I'm like, you know, I, I knew whatever we did, it wasn't going to be fast, right? So I said, you know, do what you've got to do to, for your own liability. And his, his explanation was the same as, um, what, what's his name, Mr.?
Mr. Brutsch.
Mr. Brutsch, I'm sorry. But it's, his explanation was the same as Mr. Brutsch as far as liability, and, uh, I understand that. So, and I, I know you guys do too.
Mm-hmm.
But you can't, um, un- unless you tell people, don't park, they're going to do it. They're going to.
Right.
People are going to park wherever they can find a parking spot.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
I think it would be a really good idea to get a map together with Bill and then, um, partner with HR to figure out how many employees are in those aerial locations, right? So this building has X amount of employees, different shifts. We also have to factor in the COs. Uh, we're competing for sheriffs, you know, five days, we compete with our parking lot, but they have three different shifts, you know? So if we look at all that, I think we can get a better feasibility scan with everything that we have. We can get a feasibility to know how many, you know, parts we.
I'm going to see Bill later today. I'm going to bring that up to him, if that's okay with you. Uh, you know, just kind of working through and give us some mapping as to what we're looking at.
They have to consider public too. Some of those spots should be.
Right.
Public spots that we, we provide, you know, so.
Totally.
People don't have to walk, you know, blocks.
Handicap spots, yeah.
Sure. More handicap spots, you could use those.
And we have spots that are being, we have a commissioner that's using two spots really. She has her spot, and then she uses either a handicap or another spot. This should be a general public spot.
Sure. It's all should be considered. Okay, number ten. Uh, request of order to Trumbull County Commissioners authorize various items related to publication of a notice of intent to request release of funds required for the environmental review record, Trumbull County PY twenty twenty-three, CDVG, Community Development Program, and authorize commissioners clerk to publish a notice of intent to release, request release of funds, and Tribune Chronicle require your environmental review record, and authorize me to execute record for release of funds and certification of fairly funded state projects and certification of exempt projects. Julie, make that a little less boring.
Well, I will try. I'll just start out by disputing some misstatements made at last week's meeting, since I'm not going to be here tomorrow. It was stated that we have tripled in size since the one commissioner who's not here started her tenure, uh, which was what, January twenty four one? We went from five to six employees. Now, that might be her math calculations, you know, the new math, so to speak, but given my age, I, you know, defer to the old math. And also, I want to point out that every week, if you look at these agenda items, um, we have more agenda items on a weekly basis than we have employees. We have twenty-two percent of this agenda with six employees on a regular basis. We are working constantly, and I just had to point that out. Okay. And I just, and truly, truly, I wanted to point it out to the general public who listens to these meetings, not necessarily to explain anything to a particular person. Um, and so back to item ten, the boring part of my job, which is grants, you know, getting money for the county versus costing the county money. Um, we have a, a request to publicize in the Tribune Chronicle an environmental review record for our most recent allocation grant, which is a biannual grant that the commissioners have received since nineteen eighty-two. It is not a competitive grant, however, we do apply for a number of competitive grants under the CDVG umbrella. This is the primary allocation based on number of low-income people and number and percentage of low-income people. And this year, with your funding, your allocation, which we went through public hearings on, you're funding various senior centers, the Gerard Senior Center, the Emmanuel Community Care Center, homeless facilities, and the, uh, Howland Scope Senior Center. And we're also paying to update the analysis of impediments to fair housing with YSU, another, um, disparaging remark at last week's meeting, which, um, again, um, I'll, I'll set my record of accomplishments and workload up against anybody anytime. Uh, we're partnering with YSU because we partnered with, um, last time. They're charging us a minimal amount of funding that comes directly from our grants. Fair housing is an important element and a required element of our Community Development Law Grant Program. So that's all I'm going to say about that, and the rest are very self-explanatory. I won't go on any additional diatribes.
And for the record, we, we just ignore comments and like that when they're said anyway.
I, I agree, but I think it's important for the public to hear the truth. When misinformation is stated, I like, I think it's important to hear the truth.
Right.
Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, I heartily agree.
Thank you.
It's important to defend our offices and make sure that the public understands exactly what we do.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I complete underst.
And the public needs to understand. I'll go on a limb here for a second. And the public needs to understand, I'll go on a limb here for a second and stray off thing, that we have three very strong women, four at this table. There are le- three of their leading departments, actually four if you want to count the, the Commissioner's staff, that are very strong, highly educated, competent women that are department heads, doing their job in an outstanding fashion, yet still continually get put down week after week after week by somebody who says that they champion women's rights and women in the workforce, and that is itself, um, a misnomer in itself, if I could say for myself. That's, that's what upsets me more than anything every week, when I see one Commissioner attack women that are leaders, women that are department heads, that are leading our county forward, um, to me, that's what bothers me more than anything. So I'll send my piece, I'll do. Number eleven. To accept maintenance bond number provided by CNA Surety for the work completed, work by Corilla Contractors for Oakwood Drive paving project and Forest Hills Estates plat number four, Howland Township, Trumbull County, Ohio. The price proposal was reviewed and approved by Trumbull County Engineers Office and CNA Surety, and a claim check was issued to Trumbull County to complete the work. Corilla Contractors requested final payment in the amount of twenty-two thousand one twenty for the completed work, two-year maintenance bond for the work completed, and the amount of a hundred percent of the final project cost repeated two years. Maintenance bond valid for two years, commencing November third, twenty twenty-three, and ending twenty twenty-five.
It's self-explanatory, we've been working closely with the county engineers on finalizing this project. Um, it's a performance bond that needed to be, um, pulled in order to complete work in, in Forest Hills plat number four.
Are we typically notified when the bond is up, or is that something you monitor, or is it something the bond agency does?
We monitor that. Yeah, we don't have many occasions to have this, this is the only one I've dealt with in four years. Bye, Merry Christmas. Um, and so, in this particular case, yes, the planning commission is charged, especially when dealing with these larger subdivisions, with monitoring performance bonds, which by definition do not expire until they are released by the county. And so we've been corresponding with the insurance company for the last several years, myself and Tom Gentis and Gary Schaefer have been working on this to, um, try and get it, bring it to some conclusion, and we were able to finalize the work and, and we'll be closing out the performance bond as soon as, uh, the county engineers receives their final payment, I think they're waiting for thirteen hundred dollars.
Okay. Twelve. Modified journal action dated May ninth, twenty twenty-three to designate Mr. Andrew Chekovich.
Zetkovich.
Zetkovich.
Zetkovich, environmental coordinator, is the official floodplain administrator on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. Uh, Mr. TJ Karen left the position, and Nick Coggins was designated as interim, and, uh, Mr. Chekovich successfully completed his probationary period, and the duties are gonna go to him now. Now that he's shown that he's competent and capable.
Yes.
Good hire there.
Yeah.
And I'm sure that's a relief off of Nick's back because he's overloaded as it is. Number thirteen.
Yes.
To authorize planning commission for fair and apply for the Center for Nonprofit Leadership, Youngstown State University for the twenty twenty-four Zoldan Yampolsky Family Executive Fellows Program, and commit the local matching funds in the amount of five hundred ninety-four dollars contingent upon award, and authorize President Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to sign and execute any related documents thereto for the application, submission, and implementation of the twenty twenty-four Zoldan Yampolsky Family Executive Fellows Program. If funded, the Trumbull County Planning Commission will host a fellow through this program.
This is, we are invited to participate, um, and so we decided to take up the Center for Nonprofit Leadership on their invitation, and if we are funded, then this employee slash fellow will be, one of the requirements of the program is that they be added to our payroll, that's hence the reason why we're required to have that local match, um, available for the two hundred and twenty-five hours that they'll be working, uh, in our office. Um, and I've personally hosted ten, ten or eleven, um, interns in my tenure at the county, and I think it's an important thing to mentor young men and women who are, you know, in college and give them the ability to, um, see how government works and potentially, you know, take it up as a career path, which many have. In fact, my, one of my former interns is the, uh, Director of the Ohio Land Bank Association. Hopefully we get funded.
For something as minimal as that, or any extra training like that, that's, that's a given to me. Okay, number fourteen. Mark, can you take this one over, I gotta make a call for the good of the county, I gotta return.
And I believe this gentleman is here, or no?
Sure.
This is?
Yes, I believe, oh no, this isn't yours, this isn't break. Okay, okay, so, uh, number fourteen, to adopt a resolution to support the application by, uh, charter communication spectrum to round two of the Ohio Residential Broadband Expansion Grant Program to deploy broadband infrastructure to unserved and or underserved locations in Trumbull County, resulting in greater high-speed internet connectivity. This is something that obviously, um, Julie and the planning commission, one of the many things that Julie and the planning commission and Nick, uh, has been spearheading, um, to try to, um, get, um, connectivity to, um, underserved and, uh, unserved areas in, in, in Trumbull County, especially in our northern tier, and are even in our cities and municipalities as well. There's a lot of, uh, funding out there, um, for this type of thing, and we want to support it wholeheartedly. Um, this is, this is just one, the next step of this, right Julie, can you add anything to that?
You know, truly, Nick is out this week for the entire week, and so he really is the lead on these sorts of things.
Yeah.
I think this is a standard letter of support, and maybe when the next gentleman comes up, I believe he is requesting a support letter for a similar.
Yes.
So these are companies applying for the funds.
Applying for the grants, yeah.
Um, and so, they're not even asking for funding like they did in the past.
Right.
So I think it is very important for us to, uh, support them
Absolutely.
with the letters of support, um, you know, a lot of the information on where these, um, extensions and, and, um, new services are being made available aren't public-facing.
Right.
Um, and so I can't even really speak to where, I think in this particular one or in the next one, it does list townships that are potentially being targeted.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, it's all good, and we're also working, continuing to work with Eastgate on, on new funding there as well.
With a backbone project too, uh, and, you know, thi- this is how it's gonna get done. I mean, this is, we, we have to support these companies
Right.
that are gonna put in the infrastructure, that are gonna put in
Right.
uh, the technology so that these people have access, so
Right.
uh, it's a no-brainer to really have this, uh, um, letter of support, so, okay. Uh, moving on to fifteen, um, to authorize and execute an agreement with Youngstown Neighborhood Development Corporation and Trumbull Neighborhood Partnership for the purpose of acting as a responsible entity to perfor- to be performed by the Trumbull County Planning Commission according to twenty CFR part fifty-eight, in order to carry out the activities funded through the older Adults Home Modification Grant Program, uh, application number as listed.
Oh, I thought you had Bright, Bright Speed Max, oh, I, okay, all right, so fifteen.
Bright Speed sixteen, I think that.
Gonna get a break.
Yeah, fifteen is Julie Green, fifteen is similar to the MOU we entered into earlier this year with TNP, Trumbull Neighborhood Partnership. So they apply for, um, funding through HUD or, um, special funding available to help, in this case, modifications for seniors and carry out these programs, and one of the requirements is that we have a designated, uh, responsible entity to carry out the environmental review. I completed the environmental review for, uh, TNP, the Tier One, they haven't initiated the Tier Twos yet, and we will work hand in hand with their staff to, uh, carry those out and submit those online. Uh, and then this is a similar grant, uh, and so having done environmental reviews for twenty-three years, it's not really, you know, an ex- too much of an extra burden, the, the benefits far outweighed the time spent, um, in completing these and serving as the responsible entity on behalf of these organizations who do so much for our region, um.
So who would be the designated entities, I guess?
Well, Trumb- 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 Trumbull County Commissioners are the responsible entity under, um,
Right.
HUD regs and Ohio law. I, the planning commission will do, to carry out the actual work on behalf of the Commissioners.
But then the environmental review is carried out by these entities?
Well, us with them.
Okay.
So the Tier Ones, I completed basically solo with feedback from TNP, and I'll do the same with YNDC. But the Tier Twos are site-specific, so that requires a lot more fieldwork, a lot more interaction with, you know, the homeowners that are being helped, and so their staff, YNDC and TNP staff is triple what I have, actually triple what I have.
Yeah, not the new math triple, the real math.
Real math triple, and so they understand that these types of activities will, you know, require a lot of coordination.
Right.
To coordinate with between, I don't, I don't know if you guys noticed this, not to change the subject, on that Microsoft three sixty-five, it tells you how many people you interact with in a week.
Yeah, isn't it awesome?
I was surprised.
And you can see like who, view documents and stuff, I mean, it's actually, it's phenomenal.
That's awesome.
It's very interactive.
It says on average, I in- interact with, uh, fifty-six people in one week.
It's doing so many quantifiable facts behind the scenes that you don't even know.
Yeah.
I just, like Big Brother, this guy watching you work.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think it's, I think it's actually pretty cool, so anyhow, um, that's, yeah, that's in, it in a nutshell. So they're applying for it in this case, they don't have it for sure, the other grant, they have the money in place and they're ramping up to get started on it, but this is another pot of money that'll help our senior population throughout the whole region. So this is Mahoning County and Trumbull County.
Yes. Number sixteen, uh, here we go with, uh, Bright Speed. Resolution expressing intent to support an application to the Ohio Residential Broadband Expansion Grant Program by Connect Holding, two LLC, doing business as Bright Speed, uh, so would you, your name for the record?
Sure, absolutely, it's Josh Motzer with, uh, Government Affairs with Bright Speed. Yeah, uh, I thank you for the opportunity, and then, as I was pointed out, so, I've been talking with, with Nick and, and putting the resolution on here, and first and foremost, I wanted to thank you all for giving us an opportunity to introduce you to Bright Speed as well, right? Just briefly, um, Bright Speed about a year ago closed the transaction to purchase the local telephone and internet assets from CenturyLink.
Okay.
Um, and so that's where I was, um, and actually, my time, uh, twenty years ago dates back to when we were Sprint and Embark and CenturyLink and now Bright Speed, and.
You didn't work there twenty years ago.
I was gonna say.
Twenty-one, actually, um.
Oh my God.
My entire professional career has been in telecom. What's exciting is, so I was there twenty years ago when we were putting out blazing fast internet at one dot five meg, right? And people were like, this is fantastic, right, we all have to buy it, and we were seeing the landline telephone access go down. Um, and now we're deploying, um, you know, fiber optic facilities at gigabit speeds, you know, to our same customer base. So what excites me about Bright Speed is that we're now privately held and we're funded to actually deploy to over three million of our six and a half million addresses in twenty states. So again, Bright Speed purchased the assets from CenturyLink in twenty states, Ohio being one of them. Six and a half million addresses passed in our local footprint, so the really nice thing is, it's the footprint we know, these are our customers, these are the people that we've always had. We now get an opportunity to invest in that network, um, and so we're funded with two billion dollars of private equity to pass three million addresses on our own, so before I ever talk about grants, we have an opportunity to pass three million addresses over the next five years with fiber optics.
How much was that private fund?
Two billion.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah, our industry is, uh, booming right now, um, everybody's interested in making an investment, getting into partnership.
Sure.
But not everybody's been here since the beginning, right? I personally haven't, but obviously, the company itself dates back to even United Telephone of Ohio, right? Yeah, right, so, yeah, I was gonna get everybody's attention on that one, right? So what I, what again is exciting for someone like myself is, like, we're now here in these markets and investing, so you have all that piece, and then we appreciate obviously any support that y'all can provide as we do the next step, which is, um, we have those.
So is this application done yet, or you haven't, you haven't?
So we, we have by January fifth, um, so, uh, over the holidays, we'll be finalizing our, our grant applications. Um, I can give you some high-level thoughts around what we're planning on doing.
Yes, yeah.
Um, and, uh, the, the, understand that this particular program, again, these two resolutions, you're doing it correctly. What I mean by that is, you're supporting those who are interested in supporting you all, right? Um, you're not committing money, you're not, you're just providing letter of support, so that's certainly appreciated. Um, the state broadband program is structured around a scoring criteria, and it is a very rigid scoring criteria. You get this many points if you do this, you have this many points if you do that. So when you put a program together, you really have to closely look at every one of those little scoring criteria because there's only seventy-eight million dollars available, so you want to get your program scored as high as you can. So one of the things that we'll have to consider is how small or how big of a project we do. So it's likely that we'll, our application may not just be Trumbull County, because we don't know that just the Trumbull County project will score as high as one that might include Ashabula, or even for us, we're in fifty-two of the eighty-eight counties, we may have to submit a project that's, that's, uh, bigger than.
But will all the counties be covered in one way or another, or will Trumbull County be covered in some way?
So, yeah, so if we.
There'll be a project for Trumbull County is my point.
So if, if, think about it this way, that, um, when we submit the grant project, we have to say what addresses we're going to serve. So in all of the iterations that I've seen that we've ran, Trumbull County, a project in Trumbull County is included in that, absolutely. Um, and, you know, so we could range anywhere from, you know, eight hundred or so addresses depending upon if, uh, and these are, I'm sorry, unserved and underserved addresses, you can't fund something that's already been built out, right?
Right.
And we could go anywhere, come, uh, seen Trumbull at the five hundred to eight hundred range of served or underserved. Um, and again, this is state funding and we're bringing our own money to the table. So a resolution like this, what it does is that, um, because it in- it's included in the application, there's a scoring criteria that says you get so many points if you have a resolution from the county.
Letters of support, yeah.
Yeah, and letters of support from economic development, which we are talking to, to Nick about that.
We're happy to help, and we're, this is, your fight is our fight, so.
And that's, yeah, and, and again, what, what I think other counties have said this, and I think you all, based off your already conversations I've heard, the county doesn't want to be the one deciding who wins.
No.
Right, because, and again, that's different if you're supplying funding.
Right.
If you're supporting it, you say, hey, I support those who support us and go conquer the hills.
That's right.
So, um, you know, appreciate the opportunity to at least introduce you all, happy to answer questions even afterwards of anything that you all might have about Bright Speed, and I'll make sure to leave my card for that, all my contacts.
Please do. Thank you, thanks for being patient with us.
Oh, no worries, absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, very good. Seventeen, um, to appro- number seventeen, to approve the acceptance of an extension of Oakwood Drive into the Howland Township Road System, this road is located in Forest Hills Estates plat number four. Um, recorded as instrument number two zero one six zero four zero five zero 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 five eight seven eight of the Trumbull County records and has met all the requirements of the county subdivision regulations. Steve, is that you?
It is, um, this is just to accept that section of Oakwood Drive, I'm sorry.
Thanks, Josh.
Related to the item eleven.
Steve Berber with the Highway Engineers Office, um, this is to accept Oakwood Drive into the, um, Howland Township Road System that were, this course has been paved.
You said eleven, Julie?
Yeah, it's related to item eleven.
Okay, all right, very good. Okay, um, uh, public hearing tomorrow, ten o'clock, right?
Yes.
Uh, to, so that we're gonna be voting on this after the public hearing, to approve or deny that the Howland Township number eight bridge be renamed the Howland Veterans Bridge in honor of those individuals from Howland Township who have served their companies armed forces, and the Howland Township number nine bridge be renamed the Howland First Responders Bridge to recognize those individuals who have served Howland Township as dedicated public servants. We do a lot of bridge renaming, uh, in Trumbull County, or naming in Trumbull County, uh, these are all very important. Usually we always do veterans, uh, but now we're, we're expanding it to first responders, which is a great thing. Uh, I don't think this is gonna be met with any pushback, uh, Steve, you got anything on that, or?
No, there's nothing, I mean, we presented this last week, the hearing's tomorrow, and then your, you know, approval or denial of these.
Yep, okay, uh, nineteen, to concur with Trumbull County Engineer to grant the special hauling permits, uh, to move overweight equipment over Trumbull County roadways, requested by ATS Specialized Inc., uh, pretty standard permit.
Yeah, that was standard overweight permit, they were moving a piece of equipment out of worn fab over in Hubbard.
Okay. Uh, number twenty-one, to concur with Trumbull County Engineer to grant a special annual supplier fleet permits for fleet vehicles to transport aggregate concrete, construction goods, or other like materials not to exceed eighty thousand pounds, uh, to sites located upon load posted Trumbull County roadways requested by the companies listed, that's TJ Hershey Trucking. That's T J Hershey Trucking and Yoho's Action Septic Tank and Supply. Again, pretty standard.
Yeah, those are two standard, um, renewable permits for those two companies.
Okay, uh, twenty-two, concur with Trumbull County Engineer to grant the right-of-way permits, uh, for Pollard Land Services, um, Dominion East Ohio, Eastern Natural Gas and TK Excavating. Again, pretty standard, anything on that we need to know about?
Uh, nothing really. Pollard Land Services is for the, um, Scott Street Penitentiary Sewer Project.
Okay.
In the letter that was submitted with the permit, yes, the commissioners waived the permit.
Okay.
The other, um, there's three for Dominion and the other two then are just right-of-way permits.
Okay. Okay, uh, twenty-three, to approve the purchase of service contract, uh, buy-in between the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services and Guardianship and Protective Services, Inc. of one thirty, one three seven one Church Street, Middle Ridge, Ohio, uh, and an amount not to exceed thirty-three thousand dollars to be paid from, uh, the fund as listed. No county general funds are requested. The agreement is effective for the term of October first, twenty twenty-three through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Guardianship and Protective Services, Inc. will provide services for adults to be provided for eligible and referred T C D J F S clients who are at risk, including assessment, guardianship, community guardianship and conservatorship services. Uh, services are based on an hourly unit of payment of fifty-six dollars per hour billable in quarter hour increments. John, does that, does that, uh, does that go out to bid?
Yes, that goes out to bid usually, uh, in, uh, August, September. Uh, there used to be another, uh, company or, uh-
Remember, I think.
Uh, that used to bid, but they decided not to bid, they're in-
This is the only bidder?
Guardianship is the only bidder. They've been the only bidder for the last few years.
Yeah.
Uh, they do, do a good job for us. And this is for the A T S clients that, uh, we refer to them that are abused, neglected or exploited. And once we have done our assessment, we, uh, hand it over or provide it to him to do his guardianship or whatever is necessary to protect those seniors.
Very good. Commissioner, we're on twenty-three, if you wanna, you go to twenty-four.
Anything in particular I missed in here that's notable?
Just routine permits, uh, from, from highway.
Spectrum and Bright Speed.
Oh, Spectrum and Bright Speed, uh, letters of support.
Is Steve giving us all spiel on the right-of-way permits?
It was, uh, it's pretty detailed.
He could recount if you want.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and then Bright Speed and Spectrum with, uh, letters of support-
Yes.
For them to be able to provide to the underserved and unserved areas of the county hopefully.
So we're on the twenty-three.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, twenty-four.
All right, approve the sub-grant agreement, buy-in between Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services and tri-county jobs for Ohio graduates, the term of October one, twenty twenty-three through September thirty, twenty twenty-four. Amount not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars. Services provided are education and training-related activities designed to directly provide required training elements of the T A N F, C C M E P eligible program participants in order to assist Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services in meeting with the performance measures and required skill gains established for this funding while ensuring compliance with the required state and federal code as related to the program.
Yes, John Gargano, G A F S Commissioners, this is a contract or an agreement that we also went out to bid for. Um, and Jogs, I think, was, uh, the only bidder on this. They have, uh, provided services in the past and is to help those individuals that need education and training for certain related, uh, occupations. And it's for that period of time and amount not to exceed four hundred thousand. No general fund, uh, funds are requested. It's through their grant.
Perfect. John, how much would you just estimate, just a ballpark figure? With everything that you do in your job capacity, how much of the funds are granted monies that you're dealing with compared to budgeted money that we deal with?
Well, I'm gonna say, uh, an overwhelming proportion of it is grant monies. Monies from the, uh, W O Act, the Workforce Investment Act, those type of acts. Uh, the budgeted amount that the county gives us is the mandated share, which is set by law. And I think this year was, uh, six hundred and maybe ninety thousand dollars, somewhere in that area.
Sounds right.
Uh, that's all that the county gives us. Everything else is through grants and appropriations through the state and the feds.
And it's all stuff you gotta put in for, you've gotta acquire the money to be able to use it?
Some of these we have to put in for, some of them are, are annually allocated or every two years allocated, depending on what the, uh, program is.
Who's your grant person over there that handles the majority of those?
Uh, we don't have a grant person. We do it in-house mostly if we, if it's a grant, uh, the fiscal department, usually it's Melissa and Bill, uh, will get together and see what it is, uh, and then they'll work on it. But a lot of it is already in place through the feds and through the state that just comes through.
Your staff does a hell of a job because every, it seems like every third or fourth thing, you're getting a grant from somewhere, you're putting in for something, so.
We try to.
That's awesome. Okay, twenty-five, adopt the resolution in the matter of accepting and transfer of funds for security services to be provided to Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services by the sheriff to employ each deputy for actual hours of service performing accordance with state and federal laws and current collective bargaining agreement applicable to the assigned deputies to the county general fund and transfer to the sheriff of Trumbull County. First, did we get the sheriff's pay from last year yet?
Well, this, this is what it is. If you approve this, then we can pay them. It was a long journey, uh, we, uh, I worked with prosecutor's office on different things which they didn't really particularly care for. First of all, we used to have an agreement in place for many, many years and the prosecutor's office said that we couldn't enter into that agreement ourselves directly anymore, uh, as like with Veterans Affairs and, uh, uh, C F D. And we had to go through the commissioner's office. Uh, so, um, we were working with them and, uh, we had some other, um, documents that we proposed and it, uh, weren't, uh, to the prosecutor's liking. So we made this resolution and once we prepared this resolution, we sent it to the prosecutor's office. The prosecutor's office said that, you know, it was fine, that that, that would be, uh, okay. But before we could even bring it here, we had to then send it to the state to make sure the state would approve it before we could put it on here. So we sent it down there, took a little bit of time to come back. We had to make some minor adjustments on it, um, per the pro, uh, per the state. But then we also, uh, sent it back to the prosecutor's office and they had no objections to it, uh, the change that the, uh, state wanted us to have. So with this, once you approve it tomorrow, we will be able to then pay them, uh, the funds that they're due for this year. We also prox- approximately about a month ago, we were here with a meeting with Auditor Yoder. Um, Alex was here, uh, we had our, my fiscal people here and, uh, Major Villanueva to see how that process is going to work with the billing coming from the sheriffs through the auditors to you, to us, and then reimbursing the commissioners. So that's pretty much in place. Oh, Sheriff, Sheriff was also here, I'm sorry. So that's all in place, so once this gets approved tomorrow, we will be able to then, well, it'll be paid by the commissioners. We reimburse the commissioner's office.
Right.
And whether, how does that all affect us in the big picture as far as the sheriff's budget?
Well, it's, it's helpful, um, I can't give you exact, I don't have Christie here, my magic.
(cough)
But, but we know that it's gonna help with a lot of figuring things out. Christie was very excited to see this one, because we, we're trying to get everything end of the year kind of straightened out.
Right.
But it does help a lot and, and we're also, when we look at twenty-four, we're going to look at tho- those sources of revenue so that it offsets some of what they want. Um, because they, they weren't necessarily including that when they did the budget with what, what was presented to you guys at the end of November. So we're trying to make sure, and then of course in twenty-four, we wanna get this part of this done as quickly as possible. But I think it's, the, the trail's been blazed.
Yes.
So now we can (laugh) do it and, and that will help twenty-four quite a bit. And it'll help us finish up twenty-three.
And I do have to thank Commissioner Yoder and her-
Commissioner, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Don't demote me.
(laugh) Auditor Yoder and, and, and Curly and that because they're very helpful. And, and, uh, in getting to this point, and Sheriff and Alex.
Very good. Yeah, it'd be nice, you know, I can't believe for years we're operating on them not getting paid or not knowing where it came from or not getting reimbursed the way that it should. We had deputies that provided the service and everything, but it's nice to see a clean cut now, like where it goes to, where it comes from.
Well, and it's-
Ours was always getting paid.
It was paid, it was just, it was just realized that it wasn't necessarily being done the way that it was supposed to be done or, oh, at least the way the legal beagle sells it to.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause we had our own agreement with the, uh, church department, which we had since two thousand and ten. We, they always got paid by us. It was just this past year because of what, uh, Auditor Yoder said with the prosecutor's-
Well, see, and one part of it was now we gotta figure out how we do it at the front door and the courts across the street and how we bona fide all that.
We're getting-
Yeah, this started the, this started, this was the heavier burden because of state and federal funding to his point.
Right, right.
Um, so it wasn't just, uh, we could figure this out ourselves.
Right.
And then had to take it back and make sure the state and federal government-
And, and Christie's-
We like other people's money more than our own money anyway.
Right, right. Christie's working on all of that. And, and I will say, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, I will say that the sheriff's office has a relatively new hire, um, who has-
Janet.
Janet, yes, who is doing a fantastic job at absorbing all of this and understanding it and working really well with Christie on coming up with a system so that it's done in much more of a timely manner. And we don't look like we have more of a deficit than we have over there. Um, so it's getting there.
Very good. Okay, request the signature of the board of Trumbull County Commissioners with regards to the memorandum of understanding is required to be signed by community partners who are likely to encounter alleged child victims of abuse or neglect. In twenty twenty-one, the Ohio House of Representatives passed House Bill four, which among other things requires all county children's service agencies in Ohio to submit a memorandum of understanding with all applicable community partners to one, eliminate unnecessary interviews of children who are subjects of abuse and neglect and two, ensure that the community partners understand the duties, responsibilities and interrelationships of agencies and professionals who work directly with children who are alleged victims of abuse and neglect. Uh, the M O U's are uniform across state in terms of their required content and the state has accepted the contents of Trumbull County Children's Services M O U. And the M O U has been signed by the prosecutor, the judges, the sheriff, chiefs of police, um, Mr. Gargano and the other entities, so just for us to jump in on that M O U. Glad we do that. And we did number twenty-seven, number twenty-eight. Uh, receive a journal action filed by appropriate judge Frederica approving the Cincinnati Insurance Company, uh, for bonding of the Trumbull County Sheriff in the amount of one hundred twenty-five thousand, five twenty-eight. I imagine that's an annual thing that we do?
It is.
And twenty-nine, receive record and journal purpose of furtherance of bond, uh, of Paul Monroe for Cincinnati Insurance Company. This is just something that goes along with the first one prior to it.
Yeah, yeah.
And thirty, uh, receive a journal entry filed by appropriate judge Frederica approving a bond for Dennis Watkins, prosecutor in the amount of one hundred fifty-three thousand, three eighty-two. And then thirty-one goes to port that, um, as annual things. And thirty-two, amend the journal action November eighth, taken by the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners in regards to authorizing expenditures from ARPA, Vian Historical Society, necessary to correct the fund number. And you're just moving fund number from one number to another number or are you creating a new one?
No, it's just from one to another, mhm. There's, there's no creation of anything or, it was just a typo, I guess, or something that happened.
Yeah, I think it got reassigned to, um-
Then on top of everything else, we get to go into executive session at the end of the day tomorrow.
Yeah, fun for you.
To talk about collective bargaining for the sheriff's department, the sergeants and lieutenants.
Yeah, this, Commissioner, this is just the second one of the five. So we have five O P V eight, well, we have six O P V eight contracts, nine on one, but this is following off of this correction. So you will see a lot of things that you've all through backfiling for the last one tomorrow.
Yeah, are they all up at the same time? We're gonna have to deal with all six of those in the nearest future?
Yep, and then twenty-four ninety-three, thirty-one ninety-six, thirty-eight oh eight, three fifty-eight, four fifty-eight, thirty-eight oh eight A, thirty-eight oh eight, four fifty-eight, all of them follow. So I am in literal negotiation and double hockey six for the next, probably nine months of my life here.
Thirty-eight oh eight.
Backfiling, yeah, in February.
February, March.
March.
Thirty-eight oh eight, which is child support.
That seems to be the trend.
Okay. Commissioner, if, uh, I was just told that, I didn't see it yet, but, um, the resolution and the agreement, um, by the animal welfare league for the opinion from the ARPA money has, has been returned, it's positive. Can we put that on the agenda? I know they're coming on this week.
Okay.
They're coming this week to put, if we can, I know it's any luck in the-
Yeah, I, I mean, do whatever you guys need done.
Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, just so you understand though, no check's gonna be cut-
Right.
Until after the first year. Now this will make it, if we do it this week, it will put it quicker in the queue.
Okay, then whatever-
We won't have, we won't have to wait until the fourth because that's when we would have to wait. So it'll be sooner in the queue, but it-
Whatever you, whatever makes it, is that okay?
But I'm, we're okay with it on our end as far as what we need to do, but this is really Lisa's call, I'm sorry.
Do we have the language released?
Yes, I have, I, I, I actually forwarded to you, I mean, during this meeting, I, I was down to-
Oh, you sent it already?
Go ahead, stand up to one of the table and join us.
Okay.
Well, and we'll get to that, I actually have it on my list.
Okay.
Okay, but, but, uh, I'm, it's, and that was on my list as well. Um, but it's, it's more of your staff. We, we won't be, but, but you won't, I just wanted to make it really clear that no, no more checks are being cut. So, 'cause we're, we gotta finish up the end of the year and Sheriff has-
I'm gonna leave it, if you can-
I mean, I'll put it on.
It does get, it probably will get them the money just a little bit faster.
Yeah, yeah. And they said they would be here this week, that's, I wanted them to know we were moving on.
That's fine, and I'm fine with, with whatever you guys do, but I just wanted to make it really clear. It, it will be, it will be early in the queue, but it's, it's, and it'll be faster than if you wait till the fourth.
Okay.
But it's still not gonna be until after the year.
I'm, I'm fine, Lisa, if you, if you need more time, that's fine. But if we can't put it on, that's fine, good, so. I know, I know. I, and Mr. President, I also have a few other things to, um-
Uh, let's have, we have someone from the, I'm sorry, guest here, let's, let's take care of her first.
Well, and, and I have that on my list and if you want, um, so, if you want me to start and then you wanna do an explanation. So, um, Kinsman has a couple of requests that are on our yes list waiting to be approved. In the meantime, if I understand this correctly, one of the requests for, come on, um, for the playground, uh, for four thousand one hundred sixty-five seventy-nine, they've actually taken some of their own ARPA money and went ahead and moved forward on it.
Well, if the parts came in sooner than we thought they would, so. And I'm in the process of creating a, have, uh, the L G F permission to create the fund for your monies that you're spending on.
So what they had requested is that if they could submit a different, more comparable, but comparable-
Yeah.
Project to i- in its stead.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely, in my opinion, yeah.
Well, we have, we, we got the one fifty-nine, a hundred fifty-nine thousand for Kinsman Park.
Right, this is, this is, right.
Then we have thirty thousand for the, the merge generators.
And then four thousand-
And then four thousand one hundred sixty-five is just the minimal, small one.
Right.
That's the one you've, you've already taken care of.
Right, they wanna, and they wanna replace it with something else.
Which is?
Well, we've, um, gotten a lot of comments from the community and they felt that if they could sign out front of the administration building where they, we can put updates to the meetings and things like that. We have people that don't receive the Tribune Chronicle, they don't have social media. Yeah, but they do have a car, so if they could drive by and see the electronic sign with the meeting date and so on there or any important, special meetings or anything like that.
We did that for Johnson Township and-
And it's, it's a little bit more than this request, but I don't know what, if you guys have priced it out or not.
I've been, um, working with a company that he feels that he can get us a very good used sign and just because some- I've been, um, working with a company that he feels that he can get us a very good used sign, and just because some townships wanna get a bigger sign, and they're, you know, boots could fit into that budget.
Okay. So you asked, if you guys are okay with that?
Yeah.
So what I would do, you have my email.
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead and email the complete, a, a new completed form, and we will replace it with that in the, in, in our file. And then when it gets, and we'll, and I'm gonna get to, uh, our queue on here as far as when we wanna do things chronologically, we decide that. But, um, as far as I'm concerned, it should probably go where the other one went in the queue.
Sure.
Um, but i- if you do send that, and then we'll, we'll have it on file, and when we get to that for the legal opinions.
Okay, and then just for budgetary reasons, so next year we can extend.
Well, here's, here's what happens, okay, with the yes, and this is one of the things I wanna talk to the commissioners about. When it goes on this, the yes, that doesn't mean it's completely approved. What happens is it has to go through legal, and then the commissioners do the formal approval. All right? So it would be, uh, probably, and as we're moving through these, and, and they do them, it probably would be approved in the next couple of months.
Yeah, we, we've got forty, some already in the approval stage.
Some- Yeah.
So, and we do three or four a week?
Are we on the-
Yes, you are on the, the yes sheet, okay, with those requests that we mentioned. Those have to get approved by legal before we formally approve them.
Those ones are already at legal. They're in the forty-four.
They're not, they're not actually, she doesn't have every single one of them, and that's one of the things I wanna talk, but they, she knows that from the meeting that we had, and we're, and I wanna talk to you about now the next order of things, and that's something I wanna discuss in this.
Sure.
But, but those are, these are on the list to be approved by legal, either to be, some of them have been sent, some of them need to be sent.
Sure.
But we don't wanna overwhelm her with all of them at once. That's why she doesn't have all of them, all right?
I just wanna extend thanks for little Kinsman Township. Um, we're so grateful and thankful for everything the county does for us.
Beautiful.
Oh.
Back way up there in the north, so we, we appreciate.
Almost Clarence there.
Yeah.
Yes.
And they're starting to work on that octagon house a little bit.
Sure.
Are they? Great.
So thank you very much.
Thank you. Just mail me the new completed.
I will, Martha.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas, Martha.
Merry Christmas. Great.
And, and really quick here, um, uh, Mr. Chairman, we received, uh, word from our legal counsel regarding educational highway. Uh, the surveyor completed the plat, and, um, the dedication for that plat is next. We're gonna, if you would, would you, um, uh, make two commissioners approve, uh, sending the plat on and rerouting the plat over to the Planning Commission? Uh, the Planning Commission will then route it to the different entities that need to, um, I guess, input on it, for, for lack of a better word. And then, uh, we can, we can get that process rolling, but we need two commissioners to send it over to, to route it over to the plat.
I, I concur with you. Absolutely.
Second thing, I think if there's, uh, and I'm not gonna steal his thunder, so I want Gary to be here when this happens, but I just wanna say, um, it's a great day because, uh, through Gary Newbrow's work in the Sanitary Engineers Department, we're able to secure, we're able to score again the highest, uh, project in the state from the E, from the Ohio EPA, uh, for the Meadowbrook Sanitary Sewer Project. Four million dollars, that's a maximum amount allotted for, uh, principal forgiveness. Uh, Trumbull County is scoring four million dollars towards that project. And it was all because of our commission, uh, putting in the one point five million for the design and architecture, uh, with the ARPA money. We were able to secure that other, over four million dollars, really. So, uh, that project, which is one of the last consented projects, which is gonna be the, one of the biggest bears to complete, uh, because, well, the, just, just the topography and everything that's there, the soil, and being close to the river and everything, it's, it's a huge project and a huge endeavor that I never thought we'd actually get to. Uh, but with, with this, basically this gift, uh, for Gary's hard work, uh, squ- again, scoring number one in the state, uh, principal forgiveness, four million dollars, uh, granted to Trumbull County, we're gonna be able to get that done. So that's a huge endeavor for Warren Township and Warren moving forward. So I just wanted to make sure we, we hit on that. Also, um, there, uh, was contacted again by, uh, Lordstown, by a member of their board, or a member of their council, about a project. Now, I, I don't know what projects they have in the hopper, I don't know.
They have like two million dollars worth of projects that they want, and I, and it's, and that was, that was put on the maybe list.
Okay, that's, that's undoable.
And, and if you, I can get through my spiel, we can talk more about what we've got left, and because that's, I, I think it's really important.
But they- Okay.
I wanted to talk to, talk to-
But they didn't pare that down at all?
No.
Okay. That, he was under the impression they pared that down to like three hundred dollars?
Mm, I haven't gotten anything from that.
Okay, I will, I will try to stay with him then, okay.
And, but, if you, and I get, you guys get people reaching out, but we're-
Oh, and I'm just, you know, I know.
I, I get them too, so.
I know.
Um, but I'd like to just kinda go through my notes on this. I've, I passed those down to you guys, so.
Okay, before we're, before we start ARPA, Julie has one more thing, let's, let's finish up.
I have one thing, sorry.
All right.
Let's finish all stuff and do ARPA.
All right.
I'm so sorry, it's only a small thing.
Okay.
Go ahead, Julie, Julie Green, ready to go.
Getting hangry.
Oh, wait, I just, I don't wanna be rude, I just-
Go, go ahead.
Julie Green just wanted to announce that, um, we have a meeting tonight in Vianna Township with their zoning commission to discuss your military installations, sustainability deliverables, right, if you wanna join us, we always love to have you. Um, and this is in support of yours. And we have a new, uh, government liaison, uh, working with us on our efforts. Uh, a number of townships, cities and villages have already adopted one or more of the deliverables that, um, emerged out of the grants. And so, um, we're just progressing forward with that, and, uh, the gentleman, the new point of contact, we have a new commander, obviously, Miss Commander Maloney, who I've met, and also Lieutenant Colonel Russell Whitlock. He's our new, uh, point of contact for this particular effort, serving the compatibility and land use of surrounding.
What time does that start, Julie?
Six P M. in Vianna Township. You know where that is, right next to the world famous sanitary engineers office.
World famous.
And I agree with, so, one of these days we need to take about, uh, eight hours and explain how much work goes into grants, procuring grants, administering grants, grants compliance, grants administration. I mean, John touched on it a little bit with his staff. But even if their allocation, what they get biannually, there's still a whole set of regulations and measures that you're required to continually update and have in place in order to ensure that you receive funding.
Thank you for what you do.
All right, thank you.
Bye, Julie, bye.
Merry Christmas, folks, the, uh-
Merry Christmas.
Alexandra.
I will be super quick. Alexandra Divergency Bush, uh, every year our, um, MCO, which is Minutemen, through Workman's Comp, is so gracious enough to give a three thousand dollar donation back to our county. Um, it's, you know, just something they do. It's something that we've done for the past couple of years. Um, it's been a point in contingency, from what I understand, the past couple of years of where the money would go. So if you don't mind, I would like to make a suggestion, and I'll leave it with you guys, that I really do think-
Yeah. Wasn't it turkeys one year or something?
Yeah, it was turkeys, but this, uh, they've changed to money since COVID.
Okay.
So, yeah, they don't like doing the turkeys because they have the handle and deliver, um, but I, I would propose that we donate to the Dog Pound. Um, I, I think that if, um, we have ten dogs who just got moved to the animal welfare league, you know, which is seventeen dollars a day, uh, they could easily cover that, a little bit of that.
Voices is paying for that right now, just so you know.
Correct.
Right, okay.
But either way, you know, and I did talk to the Dog Pound again yesterday. I keep in touch with them often, um, and they are, they are, as quickly as they got rid of those ten dogs, and I don't want to say got rid of, I mean, sent to AWL.
Right.
They are filling up with even more.
They're in the process of, yeah.
Right.
So I think it would be a really good idea, but I'll leave it up to you guys, um, and-
I think it's a great idea.
I, I think it's something we can do for, you know, not only benefit our county, but our, our people too. I mean, really, our people, our dogs, our animals, I, there's just-
Absolutely.
I think it's-
Especially this time of year.
Yeah, I think it's hind time, they're cold, uh, they need, they, they could use the money. But I'll leave it up to you guys. I just wanted to give you some idea, and I do need to give them a decision. Um, they do, like, they'll deliver it themselves, we don't have to do anything. It's just a donation that they make. We just have to let them know where we would like the donation to go.
And it would be in the commissioner's name?
Yeah, yeah.
I like the idea, but I'd kinda like to see it split.
You could split it, we've split it before. We've split it three ways. Um, so I guess we did, not last year, but the year before, we did-
How quick, how quick would this check come in?
Oh, it's pretty, they'll, they'll bring it as soon as we tell them. They've been waiting, so.
I, I'm just thinking there's, you know, the one thing, of, of course, stars, touch all of us and stuff, but, but we have essentially some things. I'm thinking children, Christmas, the name, someone with gifts or-
Sure. And the only reason I-
Children's services or one of the, one of the-
The only reason I didn't suggest that is because they've already, so, to be quite fair and honest, they get a lot of donations as it is. I know the Dog Pound does too, but-
I saw a local five seventy-three just did bikes for all the kids.
Yes. So, um, JFS, I've actually been keeping a close eye on everybody who's been donating. JFS, which I did, started before I left there, and thankfully, they've continued the tradition. They get toys, they just donated a ton of toys, um, I mean, a huge, I'm gonna actually do a blast on it. I wanna share all the good things that we're doing here in Trumbull County. Like, our agencies are rocking it out. I mean,
Yep.
We individually all kind of just, we someplace Safetree downstairs, I know I donated to that. So, I mean, there's been a lot of things that we've done here that I, I don't wanna say that you don't see, but that we have done on our own, and department heads and elected officials are just awesome. So there's been a lot that we've given back to the children. Uh, Warren Family Mission, we helped a lot of the agencies, helped, uh, Karen Allen and everything. I mean, people donated. I've been sending out blasts about, you know, donating food to the mission for the holidays meals and that benefits kids and children.
I'm open to all of them. I'm open to all of them. So whatever, I mean, if we wanna spread it out, that's fine, if we wanna-
You can do a thousand three ways. You can do whatever you want.
It's fine. They're all worthy.
I, I just wanna make sure nothing that's falling, if we, if there was something out there that we knew was falling through the cracks.
Sure, how do you weigh? Yeah.
Then I would say let's, let's plug that hole first and foremost, 'cause there are outlets for the dogs, there are outlets for the kids. Apparently there are outlets for the, for the hungry.
There is. Yep.
And I guess, uh, uh, what I'd like to do, honestly, I guess, is you deal with, deal with them, see if you're gonna deal with them, Minutemen.
Yep.
Um, I would say use your discretion. If anyone does approach you in the next day and now they're listening to this meeting.
Sure.
Maybe somebody will call in and say, hey, there's this, this is underfunded, or we got six kids that need this, or we have, uh, we had, uh, homeless veterans that are sleeping on a bridge somewhere or whatever, can use jackets or-
No problem.
Something. Let's, let's go to the end of today.
That's right.
Agreed. That's good.
And see if anyone wants to contact the Commissioner's Office, Human Resources Department, ask for you specifically.
Yeah. And I can give it to them the other week if you'd prefer. I'm okay with that.
That's good.
Okay, give a couple.
And, and I'll let you use your discretion and tell us where you think it was spent best, and you got my, my blessing, you go ahead and do that.
Agreed.
Because it's donated money, but let's, let's just throw it out there just to make sure we're not-
Yes, no problem.
-overlooking something. And if not, then Dog Pound, of course, is a worthy thing, and maybe they could buy toys for the dogs or something they wouldn't normally get or whatever in their budget or whatever for Christmas.
No problem. I don't disagree. And you're right, all good, all good things is kinda hard to weigh, but you're right. I mean-
Yeah, how do you weigh, yeah, right.
Well, and I wanna-
There's no wrong answer, yes or no.
No, government sometimes needs to overlook some people.
Yeah. Yeah.
And if there's someone we're overlooking, that's where I'd like to look first.
Even, second harvest is a good one, you know.
Well, and I wanna just, that, on that.
What we've given through ARPA as well, yeah.
Okay, well, and, and, but that's not what even what I was gonna cover. Um, there's a, a similar situation that I've had to encounter where I made a decision with regard to some funds that are go, should be going out very soon from the AG's office. Uh, I spoke a little bit about this a few weeks ago. Martha Yoder, by the way, Trumbull County Auditor, um, there's a settlement that was made with Dollar General on their pricing.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I did see that.
Um, I, I got to, as auditor, make the recommendations to the AG's office where those settlement funds go in our county,
Wow, really?
And they're going to Warren Family Mission and Second Harvest.
Okay, so, and that, and I have been keeping, I'm glad you said that, 'cause I do keep an eye on, I really am big on outside of my age or role. I keep an eye on a lot of community kind of services and give it back. And I know the mission gives a lot.
Yeah, and I'm a big fan of the mission, don't get me wrong. That's why I recommended it.
Me too, I do. Yeah.
But if we, if we are, we've already, I've already directed some things to go to them and Second Harvest, the mobile pantry for Second Harvest specifically.
Yeah. Yeah. Christie House gives quite a bit, you know, from us too, I mean, from community involvement. So, yeah, there's, there's, but I will absolutely keep it open for Friday.
Yeah, there's, especially now with the word out there, maybe there is a pressing need that we're not seeing, and we can help that.
Sure. Come forth.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. So did you have something back here?
Yep. He was with, uh, right me.
Braceby.
Okay, this is the card that I got. Sorry, I missed that, I'll talk to you after. Um, okay, Martha, the floor is all yours.
Yes.
Thank you. As I, I get hangrier and hangrier. Um, you guys, well, you know, I, I fast, right? I don't, I haven't eaten anything since last night.
Oh, my gosh.
So, um, the, it's just to give you an update and some suggestions and some questions. The, uh, attorney issued four approvals in the last two weeks. The city of Portland, three hundred thousand towards the cost of two generators for maintenance of the drinking water supply, community family outreach. Now, there was two hundred and twenty-eight, um, oh thirty seventy that was actually requested. They, that we only have a partial determination on there. There's an, there's a, that last fifty thousand, which is for a flooring thing. Um, Attorney Rogers is going back and forth with them on trying to get that, uh, established. So we kinda, we don't really have that fully determined. Um, the Trumbull County Land Bank request for twenty-five percent of matching funds for DOD grant for the demolition and site revitalization, up to two million of, of ARPA funds was approved, and I'm gonna get to them again in a minute. The AWL request, as we talked about, for two hundred and fifty thousand, and we do have, actually have a resolution on that, and I guess we're gonna move forward with that this week. Um, and then they will get paid after the first of the year. Um, the wean building invoice was submitted to us for two sixteen, five fifty-four, ten, which is less than what we thought it would be. Um, uh, so that amount, what I did with that is now on your, uh, allocated in promise sheet rather than the two million that we had initially for it. Um, this does still need an agreement and resolution because it was done a little bit differently. We had them move forward with it without an agreement and resolution.
Mm-hmm.
So we have to get that. Mr. Masaki's working with Attorney Rogers so that we can get that done, get it on the agenda early next year. Um, I, what I did, uh, with our, or with, um, the land bank is that now we have the two million dollars that, uh, you guys, that we already have, that we have approved by the attorney, has now been added to the yes list. I didn't have it on that list before. It was sort of out there separate. We, I was telling you about it, but it wasn't always on there, or wasn't on there. Um, you'll recall that I did holding it separately since, until we had an invoice for the wean demolition. Um, it's my assumption, based on the fact that you signed that letter, letter of support several weeks ago, you also asked for approval from the attorney, that you want to go ahead, um, to move forward with this. Now, Matt Martin requested that the two million be advanced to them in one month sum in order to alleviate the cash flow issues that they faced with the wean building. I don't necessarily think that that's what we wanna do. Um, and what Mr. Masaki and I kinda came up with is to have Attorney Rogers create the resolution and agreement for up to two million, and that is to be invoiced as it's spent, and you guys can decide whether you want that either monthly or quarterly. That should eliminate some of their cash flow issues or alleviate them without us putting the full two million and having to claw some back possibly at the end.
Okay.
Um, so you, would you like that? And do you guys prefer-
I like that idea.
Do you guys prefer monthly or quarterly for that, for him when we do the accord, agreement?
Quarterly.
Quarterly, okay. All right. So, uh, Mr. Masaki has that, and we'll address that. Two weeks ago, you requested that I had Braceville Township, Holland Township and Veterans Outreach to the yes sheet, and I did that. And I also reorganized the yes sheet so that it's a little bit more clear for you guys. The first few items are in red. Those are the ones that have been denied, and I don't have any amounts frozen on those, 'cause I wasn't requested to do that. The next three items that are in blue are the ones that have had denials, but I was asked to freeze those amounts. Now, I realize though that on those three, that, uh, we never reached out for a second request for the frozen money, and I wanna make sure that it, it's, you guys are both still in agreement, that you would like, like me to do that, and, uh, then I will do it. But I have to make sure that both are okay. Um, as you know, that, uh, the third commissioner has problems with me communicating with applicants. So I wanna be sure that before I do that, so I have an, I have a-
Now, now I would say on these, you're talking about the ones in red now, right?
No, I'm talking about the ones in blue.
Okay.
The red ones are denials that I didn't freeze because you didn't ask me to freeze. You asked me to freeze the three that are there. The Bristol, Mespo and Vernon.
Okay.
So I froze those amounts. That means I left the amounts, but we know that they were denied. So you want me to reach out to those three to ask for requests that are comparable to those three? Is that's what you had, you had asked me to freeze that amount, but nobody ever reached out.
Bristol, yes. Vernon, yes, definitely. Mespo, did they get another?
They did not. They, they've gotten, the township has not gotten money.
Okay, but the store society did.
Right.
Yes, then reach out to Mespo Township also.
Okay, all right. So I will do that.
Mar, is that okay with those three?
That's good by me, yeah.
Okay. So then, moving down the sheet, the ones in green are the ones we have approvals on from legal, but we are waiting, uh, or we're either, we either don't have the resolution and agreement, or we're waiting on approval on that, on you guys' approval. All right? So everything in green is that. The- The yellow or the gold is, um, the yellow or the gold. One of those is community family outreach because we have that fifty thousand in question and we're not sure of. So, we sort of have an approval, but it's subject to, you know, the revision for the corrected amount, we're just trying to figure that one out. The other two that the, are, the attorney has those, but does not have a decision on. And that's Bristol Township Park for sixteen one and Middle Ridge Historical Society for twenty thousand.
Okay.
So, now, the rest of these are in white, and these are ones that the attorney does not have, but you've, you've expressed that you wanna move forward on them. And, and I, by the way, the land bank one is also one that's in green, just so you know. Um, the, the ones that don't have highlights are that way. What I did with those is I put them in order of the dates they were requested. Because we need to have an order of priority of when she gets these. And so, my suggestion for you guys is that we just keep giving her those in that order.
That's fine.
Now, the only thing on that, because Kinsman had one, um, well, first of all, I'll move to that. Um, so you guys are okay with doing it chronologically, I've got that. And then, the next part of that is Baker Elementary, their school application was resubmitted through sanitary, but I'm leaving the original application date for purposes of the queue. So, that, because, rather than moving them to the bottom-
Yeah.
Because the application was actually in, we made that decision to go ahead and do it through sanitary.
Yes.
And then, Kinsman, I would just leave where they were as well, um, even though they're gonna submit a different request.
Yeah, that's fine.
Where that, where that, all right, so-
So, in other words, they don't lose their place.
Right, so, keep their place open.
Right.
Okay, and then, the yes sheet has caused some confusion because, and, and you just saw an example of it. Being that, well, we're on the yes sheet, that means we've got it.
Right.
That's not what that means.
Right.
We've had, we had it, Commissioner Malloy and I had an issue with a trustee a few weekends ago blowing up our phones about it. Um, I would like the board's permission to communicate to everybody who's on this sheet that's being sent to legal for review, and that only, that it's only after that legal approval can final approval. So, clarifying it with each of those applicants so they understand exactly where they're at.
Yes.
Just to make it clear.
Please.
Again, I just wanted to make sure it's okay with both of you guys.
That'd be great.
So, if I start communicating and I get back from certain people that I'm not supposed to be, then it's, I have permission.
Yep, and we have to somehow take this in high gear, the first of the year.
Well, and, and, and-
A lot of these people have already told the trustees, have already told their, had their meetings, maybe we got this money approved.
I'll get this, I'll get the notice out right away, but we are moving faster. Sh- a lot of the, the, the lag was with, was because of illness on the part of the attorney.
But we need to pick it up now, I mean, we're paying a firm, I know it's one attorney.
Right.
But we, to get through these, we're gonna have to start putting five or six of these on every agenda.
Right.
Well, and we're-
That's a lot of work on our end, that's a lot of work on Jim's end and Lisa's end, but we, we gotta do it.
And, and-
These people aren't gonna get paid till, you know.
And, and, uh, Mr. Masaki's working on those ones that are green, he's got all of those, uh, we're, other than land bank because we were waiting to hear how to do it, he's got all of those, like, in the hopper with her and working with her on it. And he'll start submitting the ones that are next on the list to, to her right away.
And the ones I see here too, the top of the list is Warren Music, Warren Civic Music.
But that's because of the date of their request.
I understand that, but we still have over to write yes, but undecided on amount, we never even decided on amount.
And we can-
Either ten thousand or twenty-five, one said twenty-five was okay.
Depending on what the city of Warren gave them, right?
No, no, it wasn't, no, that was different.
That was different. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, here we go.
They changed it, they updated it, they, they went from ten, they updated to twenty-five, you know.
Oh, yeah.
That's not longer, longer's a different one, he's at the top of the green, so he's next, he's very next.
Yeah, and we're gonna put that on, on the next agenda, right, for the first of the year.
Yeah, he's working on that with her.
He called this week and asked, so that's good that he's just, um-
Somebody came in.
Yeah. Yeah, they emailed it.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's-
Right, yeah, we're, we're working on it.
I mean, I'll do that.
So, do you guys wanna approve an amount for us to submit it, either ten or fif- ten or twenty-five?
For that, for the-
I have it as, I have it marked as twenty-five.
I'm fine with the twenty-five.
I'm more fine with the ten. It's a Warren thing, and if it didn't, I haven't split it.
What's the baby?
What's the baby?
What's the baby?
I don't know.
Well, you can, you can ask.
Seventeen five?
Yeah, there you go.
All right, ask for it with seventeen five.
Fifteen?
Fine, whatever.
Fifteen.
Sixteen.
You drive a hard car?
All right.
Yeah, really?
Send it, send it for twenty, for fifteen, then, um, and, and then, that will change very slightly the numbers I'm gonna give you, but, but not by a whole lot. So, um, I think, I'd included with your packet this time, the yes spreadsheet and the alloc- and the allocated promised spreadsheet. The allocated promise has been updated, like I said, with, um, the actual on the wean, of course, that's offset on the yes sheet. But, um, the other thing is, is these are also the amounts that we've actually paid out, and what we have encumbered is to date. I did, I adjusted that yesterday, so everything is as up to date as it can be on that sheet. Um, I think it's really important for you guys to understand exactly how much you've committed to. So, what I did is I, at this time, instead of spreading the numbers through the sheet, I gave you a little mini spreadsheet within your notes. And so, I'm gonna go through those. So, the total that we have of the allocated and promised projects is twenty million, one hundred and seventy thousand, sixty dollars and thirty-seven cents. The total on the allocated promised revenue replacement column is seven, I'm sorry, seven million, forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. The total on the yes sheet, and again, this is by, now down by like ten, but ten thousand, but that's not much, um, is eight million, seven hundred and twenty-five, four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirteen cents. So, the total of everything between what you've allocated and promised, what you have on the yes sheet, either pending or approved by the, by the attorney, is thirty-five million, nine hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. Your total ARPA receives is about thirty-five point five million, I'm not gonna go into the whole thing. So, what you have available is the, is two million, six hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents. Given that you have just over two point six million available, if all the, and that's if all the yes requests plus any requests for the frozen, frozen funds complete the process, and when I say complete the process, it means we have a favorable legal opinion, we have a resolution, and then we have an agreement. That's completing the process. I think it's important that you stop moving any requests from the maybe to the yes until after everything on the yes sheet has been reviewed.
Okay.
Please.
You got it.
Thank you.
I agree, and that's why I didn't wanna have a meeting after the meeting today-
Right.
When it was proposed, until we have these real hard numbers, like we got wean today, we got a hard number. We got other ones coming in that are gonna be less.
Also, keep in mind on the allocated and promised, there's county projects on that. Hopefully, all of those will be less than what we've allocated, but you run into things, especially with construction stuff, where you get, end up with increases, and so, fortunately, so far, those kinda things have been very minimal. But even on, um, things like the, the chiller and cooler, that looks like it's gonna be less than one point four million, but Mike's asked me to keep that there, so I've kept it there.
Mhm.
Um, but because, there's been a few times where it came in more than what he thought it would be.
Right.
And it's just construction, and we have rising costs, and especially as we don't, uh, you know, some of these things are getting completed, but as, you know, time goes on and co- costs go up, we may have some surprises. So, you have to be, we're getting down really close, and, um, I know some people like to play closer to the edge than I do. But, he's not just any touch.
I mean, when you're studying meetings also, it's like to say that, uh, we have to make sure Attorney Rogers is there. Before we just set, say we're having a meeting.
Yeah, you're right.
And, and I, I think you guys are a little bit away from having another meeting to look at any of these more. I will say-
Guesses, but, and right now, rather than her travel here to have a meeting for three hours, I'd rather sit there for three hours and approve it.
Right.
Right, and, and I'm, and I think the, the real reason to have Attorney Rogers is maybe for some of these projects that have the denials, where people have questions, that, I think that's, that would be helpful and appropriate. Except that I will say this, and I think Jim, uh, has, Jim's expressed this to me as well. She's calling these people and doing a lot of back and forth. So, when, you know, she's, she's trying real hard to make things fit.
Right.
So, she's not being, I know it seems like, oh, she's denying, well, she's got, she's got guidelines, she's gotta follow those. And they get very complicated, and so, she asks a lot of questions, she doesn't just go, oh, this project isn't, isn't gonna work.
That's when people-
Never goes back and talks to people.
Well, that's why I don't like when people say, well, we already did a project similar to this, let's just pass it through, well, no.
You can't, can-
Project is nuanced and, and has different-
And, and she does seem to work really hard, I don't wanna say she massages them, but she does seem to work really hard to make it fit and to ask questions so that if it, maybe it's gonna fit if we just word it a little bit differently, it'll work. She's, so it's not, she's-
Yeah, yeah, she does both, and likewise, if it doesn't fit, it doesn't fit, she says no, that's, which is the, is what you want your attorney to tell you.
And, and none of us like to hear no, but some of them are-
Well, and I, honestly, I don't wanna have people come back and go, I want the feds to come back and go, you guys shouldn't have approved this. Right.
And again, we are paying her money to do this.
Mhm.
That's her job, and we need to respect that, just like we respect the department heads and their opinions, we need to respect her opinion on these things.
Absolutely.
Very well stated.
That's all I have.
Anything else?
Just for the record, then, I'll send, I'll make sure that during the, I'll call it, uh, the next two or three weeks that we, that she gets the paperwork completed for Cortland, Downbeat, Downbeat Musical, and, um, which other, uh, what was that?
Okay, the ones we don't, uh, Downbeat, we still need, Cortland, Land Bank, and A W L we took care of.
Yep, that's big.
We have that, and that, that brings us, well, community family outreach, we still need to get clarity on that. Um, just because it's, she approved it for once.
It was the Warren Music I was trying to think of.
Oh, for next, yeah, we can start-
Warren Music, Cortland, and, uh-
Downbeat.
Downbeat, oh, we already have Downbeat.
Warren Music, we don't have-
She has to get the paperwork for it.
Warren Music, she hasn't looked at.
No, she, I have to submit that for an opinion.
Right, and I, and we can even start some of these other ones, we can submit for, we can just give them to her.
Okay.
Doesn't mean we'll get them back, but we can start moving through beyond the goal into those, and we do, we're doing those in chronological order.
But, but we do have her opinion on the Cortland for the three hundred thousand.
Correct, that's in the green.
For the Downbeat Musical for the thirty.
Mhm.
We'll, we'll, we'll get the finalization for the, for the agenda for the first meeting-
For the fourth, that's the-
In the first of the year.
Uh, the only thing, I guess, the next time you and I meet, or we have a meeting, we have the meeting tomorrow.
Yes.
And then we have the reorg is our next meeting, we don't have anything before that.
Yes.
Uh, one thing that I'd, I'd like to propose is we move our, this meeting we have here to ten thirty also. So, both meetings are ten thirty, ten thirty Tuesdays, ten thirty on Wednesdays. And the reason being is we always have the Planning Commission one, one Tuesday a month, and we're always pushing them to hurry up so we can get out of there.
Yeah.
And, and just to standardize things, I think moving at that half hour, um, I know we take, sometimes we take a little bit of time here that bleeds into lunch, but, uh, if we standardize it- If we standardize it, I think it'd be, um-
I'm good with that.
Little bit easier. And are you okay with the meetings when they are, or did you wanna standardize, did you wanna move the other meeting up, did you wanna keep them where they are, or how are you with that?
Haven't thought about it yet, I mean, we can, haven't thought about it.
I like having a little bit of time in the morning for the staff to get ready for our meetings and not maybe, having, like, we moved it to nine. People would get here and then all of a sudden we're having a meeting, and if something needs printed, the copy needs, the change needs done.
Right.
I don't think it gives enough time, I don't want it in the afternoon, I think it's gonna be morning.
It is an odd time, I will say that, I think ten thirty's an odd time.
It is, but, uh, it's nice because when people are done here, it's like right into lunch, everyone needs a break when they get out of here anyway. They go right to the lunch and wind down after the meeting, so I think that, that fits good. And even with this meeting here, department heads, when they finish up with us, ten thirty, they can finish up at noon. It's right in their lunch hour, on their way back to their, especially for Gary, wherever, they can stop and eat somewhere, and they're already on the road, they're already, um, out and about for that. So, I'm, I'm okay with ten thirty, I guess, for that reason. I think if we went into eleven, we would be bleeding in the lunch hour a lot more, and we would be affecting staff schedules even here when they eat lunch and stuff. So, I think that works, with just standardizing the two.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Just helps us a little bit with, uh, especially in Planning Commission days, you know, hate for us to, to rush through that, it's too important.
Yep.
We are doing a workshop between the reorg and the first regulated, correct?
I didn't know that, okay.
I don't, I don't, if we decide, I don't think it's a, I had it as a question on the note, did you?
Yeah, well, let's, 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 let's hash it out then.
What day would that be?
We had the second and the fourth for sure, the second for the reorg and the fourth for the regular meeting, yeah.
Tuesday.
So, we have the third as a question, and I, I- The third, are we doing a workshop that day?
Yeah, if we, if we have a regular meeting on the fourth, we should.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
At ten thirty.
It would be at ten thirty, man, that would be, that would start anew.
The work, the workshop would be on a Wednesday then.
Right.
And the meeting would be on a Thursday.
Only because of the holiday, it's getting hot. And the reorg's a Tuesday, so it'd be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Okay, so Tuesday reorgs, Wednesday workshop, Thursday meeting.
Yes.
All at ten thirty, same rate.
Does the reorg count as a meeting?
No. Unfortunately.
Well, once again, I just wanna reassure you, Commissioner, I talked to C C A O, and I talked to our private attorneys that we had that were with the A G's office, and they are all in concurrence collectively and together that our workshops, the way we've been handling our workshops, these two count as a, as a meeting.
Oh, good.
And what C C A O told me, and this was their words, they said, "What if you don't have fifty? There's no penalty, there's nothing in our revised code, there's no penalty for it." So, he says, "It says it's, you have to have fifty for statute, but if we don't," he said, "There is no penalty." And there's, and C C A O has many counties that don't hit fifty, and there's no penalty, there's, there's nothing-
You just shoot for fifty, basically.
Right, they, they set fifty as, here's, they tell you, that's what you need to do, but there is no penalty if you don't hit fifty, and there's, you're not losing any funds, you're not losing any money. You're not penalized in any way as a county, that's what they just said as their standard.
And with our workshops, we have over eighty, eighty, ninety.
We do, so we're, we're well over that, but I'm just saying, he, what he said is, even if, if it was, he said, "There's no penalty." He said, "We have many counties that don't hit fifty."
Okay.
He said, "So, don't worry about it," and that came from C C A O.
Their attorney, right?
Yes, well, no, it came from, um-
Lutes?
Lutes.
He's their attorney.
Okay, well, he's the one that said, he said, "Yeah, there's nothing in our revised code," he said, "If you don't hit it, you don't hit it, there's, there's no penalty for it." So, I mean, we're, our penalty is being judged by the public, that we're not doing our job, but we are hitting it according to what the law is.
We're way above that, a lot of counties don't even do workshops, so.
No, we looked at what other, we looked at what even Asher Villa, Mahoning, uh, counties around us, we are doubling the amount of time we spend in this. For a county commissioner's job that's supposed to be a part-time, they have a thing, I think we are exceeding by all standards of counties around us in the work that we do. And, and with that note too, this is the end of my first year, I wanna thank you for all the assistance and the whole staff, I wish everybody was still here. But, um, Ray had a question for me the other day that he had asked about, you know, what our accomplishments were and what your biggest things were. And, and I will get with you after the meeting with this stuff, Ray, but there's almost too much to list. The stuff that we've been able to do in this room, and I think just the, the morale that I've seen from when I, the day I got here was gloom and doom. And literally the first day that I was here, I sat in my office and said, "What the hell did I do? You know, why did I run for this job?" It was my, literally my worst day of work in my whole adult career, the first day I was here. And then, you started meeting people, and I started seeing how people were relying on us to do our job and get things done. And now, it's the greatest job in the world, but I, I've seen that whole, like a light come on over the year where department heads are running with it, they're doing their thing, people are getting a little bolder maybe because they feel like they have the backing of you and I to actually go out and do their jobs and serve the public without worry of repercussion or fear. I think a lot of the harassment, a lot of that stuff has tempered somewhat that maybe from seeing lawsuits that came through lawsuits that came through, or maybe just seeing that you can't win, you know, that it's two to one, the way it is, whatever it is, I think we're functioning now like a more well-oiled machine way more than when I first got here. And I don't blame you or the past administration for it, I'm just saying, uh, I'm proud of those accomplishments more than anything is the morale thing with people, and when we have department meetings, like, when I walked here today, to have almost thirty people here, you know, on a Tuesday just for a, a workshop, and we've had over twenty almost every meeting, or fifteen, twenty, that's awesome, that people wanna be that engaged in the process, they're not hiding from their work, they're not just mailing it in, people are here rolling their sleeves up, getting the work done, and that, uh, the accomplishments are almost too many, too numerous to, to do, when I can go, um, agenda by agenda by agenda, agenda, and see all the stuff that we passed, you know, twenty items per agenda, and some of them are BS little things, you just gotta do road closures, this, that, whatever, there, but there's, there's some meat in that thing that we look at, it's like we accomplished, as a board of commissioners, we accomplished a lot of stuff this year, way more than I expected.
As a board of commissioners that are, that are working in a bipartisan manner.
Yes.
That can't be overstated, you know, they, it doesn't happen in Washington, it doesn't even happen in Columbus, but it's happening here in Trumbull County.